Do I have a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Franklin, Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to certify closed session that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from opening meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered?
Second.
Ms. Franklin and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Purcell and Dr. Roundtree? Any discussion? Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond? Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries.
All right. So we're going to start off tonight with our honors, rewards, and recognitions. Dr. Bregan and I are going to head down to the front and greet some of our honorees. And Ms. Purcell will take over the script from up here. Thanks.
The participation of school board representatives on the Montgomery County School Board is a vital part of giving voice to the students in our school system. Tonight, we would like to recognize this year's student school board representatives for their thoughtful participation and dialogue throughout the year. Give them a second to get through the door, I guess. The 2024-2025 Student School Board Representatives are Mallory Akers from Auburn High School, Marina Lee from Blacksburg High School, Deisha Talagia from Christiansburg High School, and Asia Mccone from Eastern Montgomery High School. If you'd like to come up and join the board chair and the superintendent? Next, the Milliken Educator Awards have rewarded and inspired excellence in the world of education by honoring top educators around the country. At this time, we'd like to recognize Anna Drew, the 2024 Milliken Educator Award winner in Montgomery County. Next, we'd like to honor our Seniors of the Month. Dr. Lori Comer, Director of Secondary Education, will start our presentation for Seniors of the Month. This is a presentation and no action is required.
Good evening, school board members, Chair Hudson, Student Representatives, Dr. Bregan, Ms. Osborne, and Ms. Stanley. As we bring forth our last group of senior nominees, we would like to wish these students and all seniors across Montgomery County Public Schools the very best in their futures as they graduate in just a few short weeks. Tonight, we are proud to celebrate the remarkable achievements of an outstanding senior from each of our four high schools. These students embody leadership and dedication, making a lasting impact on the school community. In addition to our seniors from each of the four high schools, we will also recognize two seniors from our high schools that could not attend last month in April. Their profiles are showcased here and in the central office lobby. They highlight unique talents and accomplishments. You'll hear statements from their teachers and their principals who nominated them, recognizing all of their hard work and their character. These exceptional students represent the best of our schools, supported by the unwavering encouragement of their families and educators. Each school administrator will come forward to present in the following order. Mr. Hurd, Principal at Auburn High School; Mr. Stewart, Principal at Blacksburg High School; Mr. Gwynne, Principal at Christiansburg High School; and Mr. McDaniel, Assistant Principal at Eastern Montgomery High School. We will begin with Mr. Hurd.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Bregan, Ms. Osborne. The May Senior of the Month for Auburn High School is Jocelyn Lucas, and I would like to invite Jocelyn and her family to join me. Jocelyn has left quite a legacy at Auburn High School, having been involved in a variety of activities, including the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, the Beta Club, the National Honor Society, and has been a varsity athlete, winning multiple state volleyball championships along with her teammates. Her scholarly attributes are evident as well, with her AP Biology teacher commenting that Jocelyn is an exceptional student who understands the value of hard work and perseverance. She's consistently pushed herself in AP Biology, and it is clear that she puts in the time and effort to master challenging concepts. She's never afraid to ask questions and has great insight and contributions to class discussion. Jocelyn is kind, supportive of others, and comes in each day with a positive attitude, trying her best to fight off senioritis. Her exceptional maturity and work ethic are sure to serve her well in the future. Jocelyn plans to attend James Madison University to major in kinesiology with plans to become an occupational therapist. The April Senior of the Month for Auburn High School was Ben Watson. I would like to ask Ben and his family to join me. Ben has been a stellar student during his time at AHS. His grades have been top-notch and his character has been high. He will graduate having been a member of the National Honor Society and Beta Club. A teacher said of Ben that he is outstanding in advanced placement government and politics. I've had the pleasure of teaching Ben for three years, and each year he's grown to be a determined, hard-working, and amicable young man. His great insights enrich the class, and he's always willing to go above the minimum requirements to excel. During his class discussions, he keeps an open mind and is willing to consider multiple views. His confident personality and quirky humor in the classroom foster a great learning environment for his peers, and he's always kind and easygoing with everyone. His performance on activities, whether it be making the perfect government, designing a constitutional one-pager, or presenting a project on Richard Nixon, has been stellar. With Ben's dedication and enthusiasm to learn, he's well on his way to earning top marks on the AP exam in May. Ben plans to attend college in the fall of 2025 and major in creative writing with the goal of becoming a published author. Congratulations, Ben.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Bregan. It is my pleasure to introduce the Blacksburg High School Senior of the Month for May. This evening, we're here to recognize Anthony Dew for his outstanding achievements. Anthony is here this evening with his family. I'd like to invite them to come and join me at the front. I'd like to read a brief statement from one of Anthony's teachers. Anthony Dew is an exceptional mathematics student and leader, making him an ideal choice for Blacksburg High School's Senior of the Month. He demonstrates maturity, collaboration, and a deep passion for learning. Throughout his four years at BHS, Anthony has taken and excelled in all the AP and STEM-related courses offered, achieving perfect scores of five on each STEM-related AP exam. His leadership is evident in his revival of the Math Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, which he grew into one of the largest clubs in the school, as well as his efforts to expand participation in the American Mathematics Competition and organizing tutoring and service projects. Academically, he has mastered advanced topics beyond his high school curriculum, qualifying for the AIM three times and attending the prestigious Ross Mathematics Program last summer. Beyond math, Anthony contributes to the school community through student leadership, athletics, and service initiatives. His dedication, intellect, and ability to inspire others to engage in mathematics make him a truly deserving of this recognition. Congratulations, Anthony.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Bregan. It is my pleasure to introduce the May Senior of the Month for Christiansburg High School as Samuel, we call him Sammy, Safa. I would like to ask Sammy and his family to come forward at this time, please. When asking some of his teachers to describe Sammy, they said, Sammy is a well-rounded and highly-involved student. He is an active member of the National Honor Society, Beta Club, and Key Club, where his leadership and commitment to service are evident. Additionally, his love for music is showcased through his participation in the school's symphonic band, as well as his piano playing in his free time. These experiences reflect his ability to balance a variety of interests and responsibilities while still maintaining his academic excellence with a 4.35 GPA. Outside the classroom, Sammy is a dedicated soccer player and has been able to manage his time between academics, extracurricular activities, and his part-time job as a soccer referee. This role has given him valuable experience in responsibility, leadership, and decision-making under pressure, qualities that will serve him well as he continues his academic journey. In summary, Sammy is a hard-working, passionate, and talented individual who is well-prepared for the challenges and opportunities of higher education. His strong academic foundation, leadership in multiple organizations, and commitment to both personal and academic growth make him an outstanding recipient of Senior of the Month honors. Sammy plans to attend Washington and Lee University to continue his academic journey and also play soccer for the Generals. Congrats, Sammy.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Bregan. It is an honor to be here this evening to recognize our May Senior of the Month for Eastern Montgomery High School, Mackenzie Starkey. Mackenzie is here with her family, and I ask them to come forward at this time. One of Mackenzie's teachers wrote the following highlighting her qualifications for this honor. "Mackenzie is the type of student that you wish every student strive to be. She is organized, determined, and a hard worker. Mackenzie knows her strengths and doesn't allow her weaknesses to hold her back. She isn't satisfied with the bare minimum or good enough. Mackenzie strives to excel academically. She advocates for herself, including her individual needs in the classroom. Not only is Mackenzie academically focused, but she is an active member in our school community. She is an officer in the EMHS FFA and a member of the Beta Club. Mackenzie has also played both volleyball and softball at Eastern Montgomery High School. I can always depend on Mackenzie to have a positive attitude when she walks in the classroom and for her to act as a leader to her peers. Many students look up to Mackenzie as a role model, and I can depend on her to encourage others to succeed. Mackenzie demonstrates what an all-around exceptional student, both academically and in the school community, should emulate, and we are so lucky to have her as a Mustang." Please join me in congratulating Mackenzie Starkey. I'd like to also recognize our Student of the Month from April, Talon Bruce. He and his family were unable to be here tonight, but I'd still like to read a quote from Whitney Shaver, his soccer coach. Talon is an outstanding student and athlete, known for his leadership on the basketball court and the soccer field, where he serves as the captain of both teams. In addition to his high school sports, Talon spends every season perfecting his skill and work ethic through competitive travel programs. His athletic talents have earned him All-State honors in soccer, District Player of the Year honors, and a 100-goal milestone his junior year, and an opportunity to play soccer at the collegiate level. Beyond sports, Talon is an active volunteer in his community, contributing his time throughout the year to raise money and do various tasks for our sports teams. With a perfect 4.0 GPA, he manages to excel academically while making a positive impact both on and off the field. I'm so proud of him, and there is no doubt that he will continue to add to his long list of achievements at the collegiate level. Thank you.
And next, we'll honor the MCPS Leaders of the Year. Dr. Amanda Widener, Director of Human Resources, will recognize our MCPS leaders.
Good evening, Chair Hudson, School Board members, and Dr. Bregan. It is a pleasure for me to present the MCPS Leaders of the Year Award. The award complements our annual Teacher of the Year and Support Staff Employee of the Year recognitions. Earlier this spring, MCPS employees had the opportunity to nominate an outstanding leader in the School Division for Recognition. A committee reviewed the candidates and selected two individuals as MCPS Leaders of the Year, one as an instructional leader and one as an operational leader. I will begin by recognizing our Instructional Leader of the Year. This year, it is an honor to announce Dr. Megan Hawley as the MCPS Instructional Leader of the Year. Serving in her inaugural year as Principal of Margaret Beeks Elementary School, Dr. Hawley has already made a remarkable impression, earning the respect and appreciation of students, staff, and the school community. A dedicated educator with 17 years of service in MCPS, Dr. Hawley has held multiple roles, including elementary classroom teacher, assistant principal, and principal. Her leadership is grounded in a people-first philosophy, prioritizing strong, positive relationships as the foundation of a successful school culture. Dr. Hawley is valued for her empathetic and thoughtful approach. She actively listens to students and staff responding with compassion and insight. Her consistent engagement with families and the broader community reflects her commitment to creating a school environment where everyone feels heard, respected, and connected. Through her commitment to continuous professional growth, her example as a servant leader, and her dedication to student success, Dr. Hawley exemplifies instructional leadership. At this time, I would like to ask Megan and any members of her family to step forward and recognize her as the MCPS Instructional Leader of the Year. Our next recognition is for the Operational Leader of the Year. It is a great honor for me to announce my colleague, Don Lapuaza, as the MCPS Operational Leader of the Year. Ms. Lapuaza currently serves as the Supervisor of Personnel for the School Division. She brings 21 years of experience and deep institutional knowledge to her role. Widely respected across the division, Ms. Lapuaza is known for her approachability, professionalism, and exceptional expertise in all areas of human resources. She is the go-to resource for staff, always ready to provide clear, thoughtful guidance and support. A true servant leader, Ms. Lapuaza maintains an open-door policy and consistently demonstrates a calm, caring, and solutions-oriented approach to supporting and addressing the needs of the School Division. Her ability to listen, understand, and respond with care makes her a trusted advisor and a valued colleague. Her combination of expertise, steady leadership, and genuine warmth has made her not just a leader, but a pillar of the MCPS team. This recognition is a reflection of her remarkable impact on the people, processes, and operations of our School Division. At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Lapuaza and any members of her family to step forward and recognize her as the MCPS Operational Leader of the Year.
So, seniors, if you all would come back up to the front, as well as Ms. Drew, Dr. Hawley, Ms. Lapuaza, the Board is going to take a quick break, but what we'd like to do is be able to greet everyone ourselves. So, if you all wouldn't mind coming back up for another moment. And I also just, while the other Board members are headed down, I just wanted to say a bit more about the Milliken Educator Award. For those of you, you all know this, get down there. Don't make them wait anymore. For those of you who didn't know about the Milliken Educator Award, Ms. Drew was not, no one put her name forward. That foundation found her and her exceptional teaching abilities. There were only, I believe, 42 honorees this year. She was the only honoree in the entire Commonwealth of Virginia. It was really a very remarkable honor, and we're just so very proud to be able to have educators like Ms. Drew here at MCPS. So, please, come on, come on up. Don't wait for me. Come on up.
All right. The School Board will now receive a public comment on the proposed 2025-26 School Operating Budget, similar to our public address period. The Board sets aside 30 minutes to start a public address. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the Board. Clock continues through applause and disruptions. The more disruptions there are, the fewer speakers who get to address the Board. I'll call each speaker up by name in the order that they signed up. The Board does not respond to speakers during the public address. Screens will show when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining when their time is up. Please state your name and the area of the county you live in. And the first speaker for the public hearing on the budget is Anna Vajean.
Hi, my name is Anna Vajean, and I live in District A. I'm speaking tonight in support of the budget adjustments that you all tentatively agreed upon at your previous meeting. I think that the single most important consideration for your budget should be, what can we do to best support our teachers and our staff so they can do better for our students? For this reason, I support the 3% raise, of course, the increased minimum wage, and salary scale compression down to 15 years. And I know you compromised and compressed salary scales down to 20 years, which I understand, and if it could be brought down even further, I would be in support of that. But I understand your compromise. I also support adding special ed teachers and paraprofessional positions, but I also agree with your compromise of adding somewhat fewer than the original number that was specified by Dr. Bregan. I know that Dr. Bregan indicated in another meeting that better salaries would help with attracting and retaining our teachers and paraprofessionals, so that is another reason to focus on teacher and staff compensation as the important focus for your budget, and that would help attract additional candidates to the positions. I also agree with your compromise of providing free breakfast, but not free lunch, given the other needs that we needed to address. And I also agree with not going forward with the SSO program. I firmly believe that school monies should be spent on teachers and students, not on public safety. Public safety should be funded by the towns and the county, and funding SSOs in the school budget is a slippery slope, where you may find yourself devoting more and more of your budget to public safety needs, rather than the county and the towns taking care of those needs. My son's former elementary school is one of the schools that has been without a dedicated SRO, and I have never felt unsafe during the hours I have spent in that school building. And I also agree with, since you had to make tough choices dropping the dual-language program for this year, and hopefully you can revisit that in another year, thank you all for your efforts on the budget, all of you. I know it's a long process, and I'm really excited for the improvements you're able to make for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vajean. And that concludes our public hearing on the School Operating Budget. That was our one speaker sign up for that. Now we'll move on to our regular public address. We welcome the opportunity to hear from students, parents, employees, and community members about education matters in this community. The Board sets aside 30 minutes to start a public address. We have the option to extend in 30-minute increments, which Ms. Stanley will remind us of. If there are additional speakers after 90 minutes, the Board will continue with their business meeting and hold one additional 30-minute session at the end of the business meeting. The clock continues through applause and disruptions. The more disruptions there are, the fewer speakers who get to address the Board. I'll call each speaker up by name in the order that they signed up. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the Board. The Board does not respond to speakers during public address. Screens will show when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining when their time is up. Please state your name and the area of the county you live in. Our first speaker tonight is Judy Barilski, followed by Angela Akers.
Good evening, Chair Hudson, School Board members, and Dr. Bregan. I see we're missing our School Board students tonight. I think probably exams or something might be on their schedule. My name is Judy Barilski, and I live in Blacksburg. I'm speaking tonight regarding revisions to the Code of Student Conduct Policy. I want to begin by thanking Mr. Howard and others who worked to revise the policy. I know from serving on revision committees, the hours of work, and the many minds it takes to align policy to meet Virginia Department of Education guidelines, and make processes transparent and accessible to staff, families, students, and community members. On Sunday, I sent you revision recommendations. I hope you had time to review them, and will consider them in your discussion tonight. Tonight, I will focus on highlighting four of them. First, in the section entitled, "Monitoring for Disparities of Outcomes and Opportunities", no measure is given for analyzing absenteeism. I suggest including risk ratio as the measure. It's an appropriate measure for group difference and consistent with the measure that's already stated in the policy for out-of-school suspension and expulsion. Second, in the same section of the code, consider adding risk ratio data analysis for in-school suspension. As written, only out-of-school suspension and expulsion are mentioned. Anytime a student is removed from instruction, they are denied the opportunity to learn, which increases the chances for disparity. Adding in-school suspension analysis to the monitoring process will provide a more comprehensive evaluation of the disparities and outcomes of opportunities. Third, consider adding a new section entitled, "Reporting Analysis of Disparities of Outcomes and Opportunities." In this new section, identify when the risk ratio analysis will be presented to the School Board and the public. Consider scheduling reports at the end of the first semester and the end of the school year, with the end-of-the-school-year report including longitudinal year-end data, beginning with school year 2021-22. Adding this section will establish the time for School Board presentations, and including the longitudinal data will help track the progress being made to reduce disparities of outcomes and opportunities. Fourth, consider including the MCPS Progressive Discipline Matrix in the Code of Student Conduct. Following up on Ms. Purcell's comment regarding the format for publishing Code of Student Conduct for families and students, I researched what other divisions publish. I found many school divisions include their discipline matrix. Publishing the MCPS matrix will begin to help students, families, and community members understand administrative responses to student behavior. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Barilski. Next up is Angela Akers, followed by Bob Beard.
Angela Akers, Christiansburg. This comes directly from theprivilegeinstitute.com website. WPC is an annual, dynamic, challenging, comprehensive, and collaborative experience, as has been our tradition. As has been our tradition for decades, we dive into the difficult concepts of privilege and oppression around race, gender, sexuality, class, disability, et cetera. Through the exploration of their role in all systems—banking, healthcare, justice, education, et cetera—we offer solutions and team-building strategies which work toward a more equitable world. We empower and equip individuals to work for equity and justice through self and social transformations. White privilege is the other side of racism. Unless we name it, we are in danger of wallowing in guilt or moral outrage with no idea of how to move beyond them. It is often easier to deplore racism and its effects than to take responsibility for the privileges of some receive as a result of it. Once we understand how white privilege operates, we can begin addressing it on an individual and institutional basis. Our goal is to create a local, regional collaborative project that facilitates connections, networks, and inspirations that lives on far beyond the WPS, leaving a social justice footprint. This consciousness moves a community away from diversity and inclusion and towards comprehensively challenging white supremacy, white privilege, and other forms of oppression. One, see and be fully aware of multiple manifestations in white supremacy, white privilege, and other forms of oppression. Two, have the courage and confidence to name white supremacy, white privilege, and other forms of oppression. Three, act by taking effective, creative, and urgent measures to dismantle white supremacy, white privilege, and other forms of oppression. Four, proceed as leaders, planning ongoing seeds of change. The leadership activities include mastery of key terms—white supremacy, white privilege, oppression, ally, and racism; ethnic affinity groups; youth-friendly film viewing with adult allies; individual and group reflection; regional action planning; youth-led dialogue; arts-based breakouts. Is this where our tax dollars are going? This is what needs to be cut by the budget instead of free lunch and the school safety for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Akers. Next up is Bob Beard, followed by Kim Bowman.
Good evening, Bob Beard. Thank you for letting me speak. Parents, board members, Dr. Bragan, I'm Bob Beard. I live here in Christiansburg. I'm here to expose the MCPS's wasteful spending on the white privilege conferences, costing us tens of thousands of dollars and so much more. Please visit theprivilegeinstitute.com website to see what MCPS is funding. This conference, run by the Privilege Institute, claims to promote equity, but it teaches that America is rooted in white supremacy and oppression. It transmits MCPS staff annually to bring these divisive ideas to our kids' classrooms, focused on race over results. While 43% of our kids fail in math, 30% fail in reading, MCPS spends thousands and thousands on the white privilege conference instead of on tutors who could boost scores. Education academics is the difference-maker in children's lives. The white privilege conference isn't about fairness. It's an ideology that labels our children as oppressors or victims based on skin color. The Privilege Institute website brags about dismantling the white privilege, but what does it do for our schools? It steals time from academics and divides our kids. Parents, our tax dollars are paying for this while our kids struggle. Where and how does academics fit in at MCPS? We are children, deserve schools that teach unity, not division. Go to theprivilegeinstitute.com tonight to see what MCPS is endorsing. Then ask Dr. Bragan, why fund these conferences over classrooms? Why divide our children? Where is the specific racism at MCPS? We demand, as parents, we have a full curriculum transparency, a return to traditional academics and merit-based excellence, real accountability for the board and for this administration, and we demand a white privilege conference presentation. So if we have a misunderstanding of what white privilege conference is all about, we want to see it for ourselves and for MCPS to present that to the parents so that we have full transparency to know what's going on at these conferences. We demand MCPS redirects to math and reading as our kids need us to speak up and protect their education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beard. Next up is Kim Bowman, followed by Joyce Radford.
My name is Kim Bowman, from Christiansburg, and I would like to talk about the emotional impact and how WPC's teaching hurts our students. First of all, their website again was theprivilegeinstitute.com. If you haven't checked it out, you probably should. And one of the things that I found there is that it describes a youth-action project that teaches children as young as 11 years old to fight white privilege. In 2014, an eight-year-old at WPC was taught to say, "White people get jobs easier because of their skin, not their skills." This isn't education, it's indoctrination. Imagine that your child's coming home ashamed of their race or believing that they can't succeed because of racism. White kids are told they have unearned advantages. This fosters guilt and is an assumption of racism. Non-white kids are told systemic barriers hold them back, crushing their confidence. Critics call this psychological harm, even child abuse, because it divides classmates and it distracts from learning—the actual reason they're there. While MCPS sends their staff to these conferences, 43% of our students are failing in math and 30% are struggling to read. Why are we funding these conferences that teach division rather than multiplication? Parents, this is happening in our schools, and our kids deserve to be taught that they can achieve anything, not that their race defines them. Talk to your children tonight and ask them what they're learning about race. Then tell the board to stop sending staff to WPC and focus on a real education. Our kids are counting on us. Take a look at me, I'm a white Christian. Okay? Nobody would know. My nieces, from one sister, have a black father. My father's last wife—
Thank you, Ms. Bowman, your time's up.
—was from Peru. My brother's children are Mexican.
Thank you.
I'm not a racist.
Next up is Joyce Radford, followed by Kimberly Williamson.
My name is Joyce Radford. I'm from Christiansburg, Virginia. I am furious MCPS wastes $12,500 on the white privilege conference while hiding the details. Visit theprivilegeinstitute.com and see for yourself. They teach white supremacy narratives, not academics. Yet, MCPS sends four staff members, spending $500,000 on DEI overall, while 43% of kids fail math and 30% lag in reading. Tutors could raise scores 5% to 10%, but we get ideology. MCPS rebranded DEI as "Education Access" to dodge scrutiny, risking $5 million in federal funds under the new DEI bans, yet still funds white privilege conferences. They won't share four costs despite our request. $12,500 on registration, travel, and hotels. Why the secrecy? A 2023 Stanford study says DEI, like white supremacist conferences, doesn't help academics and may harm minority kids by reinforcing stereotypes. Other schools cut DEI for results, but MCPS doubles down. Parents, this is our money, and this is our schools. We are taxed more while MCPS hides spending on conferences that divide kids. Demand transparency. File records requests at FOIA.gov to uncover the white supremacy conference costs. Tell the board to defund these trips and hire math coaches instead. Attend the next budget meeting to make your voices heard. Our kids deserve better than this betrayal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Radford. Next up is Kimberly Williamson, followed by Chris Walts.
Kimberly Williamson from Christiansburg. MCPS spends thousands of dollars annually on DEI indoctrination programs like the white privilege conference. WPC teaches attendees and ultimately our children to focus on racial and social ideology rather than academic skills, while a stunningly high percent of our kids fail at math and reading. This prioritizing of ideology over education betrays our children and our trust as well, since MCPS keeps the true costs of WPC hidden. Visit theprivilegeinstitute.com, their source of WPC, and see what lies and deceptive filth they are gaslighting you with. It's pure indoctrination, pushing false guilt and false victimhood on our kids and teachers. Federal Executive Order 14151 bans harmful and wasteful DEI practices, and MCPS risks $5 million in funds by clinging to WPC. Per Title VI and Supreme Court precedent, it is illegal to use race, either directly or indirectly, as a factor in any decision-making or action within MCPS. Parents, teachers, and students who know this is wrong, you are not alone. Learn to recognize when you are being gaslit with false guilt and/or false victimhood in order to affect your thinking and your actions. These are the malicious tenants of DEI, critical race theory, critical justice theory, restorative justice, white privilege, white guilt, et cetera. All of these are false teachings and will do nothing but bring social injustice and perpetually divide and categorize people based on stereotypes. Every child is at stake, and it's time to act. Parents and your students, teachers, community members, here's how. One, visit theprivilegeinstitute.com to see the truth. Two, file record requests at FOIA.gov to retrieve WPC costs. Three, email the board and superintendent. You can find all contact info at mcpss.org under About Us. Confidentially, this is number four, report to WPC indoctrination and other DEI-based discrimination, all violations of Title VI, at enddei.edu.gov. And five, vote out board members who waste our money and insist on indoctrination over academics. Together, we can save the schools.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. Next up is Chris Walts, followed by Anna Vajean.
I'm up here, this is the third time I've addressed it. The first time, to all of you sitting up here, but this has been addressed twice before, and I do have recorded phone calls, but it seems that you all just want to violate the law and ignore the law pretty much every meeting. It says on here that at 6:01, you decided to enter into a closed meeting, but at 6:01, this chamber was empty. All closed meetings, and it's in the law, which all of you are supposed to have had training in once you were elected, you have to enter an open meeting, and then you have to make a motion, you have to read the exemption, and you have to vote. It says here you voted, but none of you were in the room. So where exactly did that vote happen? Because an open meeting means anyone in the public can attend, like me. The first time I did it, I just read the schedule wrong, so I showed up at 5:45, like I did today. This is the third time. Why do you think you can violate the law? What makes you special? You should follow the law and do exactly the procedure that the law requires, because you're not above the law. And while you may think you are, you are not special snowflakes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walts. Next up is Anna Vajean.
Hi, my name is Anna Vajean, and I live in District A. And first, I'd like to just say that since white privilege actually does exist in our society and in our institutions, I do support staff learning about it and about the ways they can better support our minority students. But what I actually came here to speak about today was the importance of reading authentic literature and long works, like full-length novels and plays, not just short selections. I personally think that kids should be reading at least one longer work per quarter as kind of a benchmark. Greater authenticity in the works that they're reading is going to lead to greater interest, and reading longer works will lead to greater reading endurance. My friends who work in higher education tell me that there is kind of a crisis at that level. High school graduates are not well-prepared to read to the extent and depth required at the college level, so we need to do better. Massachusetts, as you know, has generally good outcomes. They approach ELA quite differently than we do here in Virginia, and I'm wondering if we can move a little closer to what they do. This is a quote from the Massachusetts Curriculum Framework for English Language Arts and Literacy. "The purpose of teaching literature is not only to sharpen skills of comprehension and analysis, but also to instill in students a deep appreciation for art, beauty, and truth, while broadening their understanding of the human condition from differing points of view. Students are expected to read extended texts, well-written, full-length novels, plays, long poems, and informational texts, chosen for the importance of their subject matter and excellence in language use. Students build stamina by reading extended texts, because such works often explore complex topics in ways that shorter texts cannot. Learning to persist in the reading of extended texts predisposes students to reading for pleasure as adults and prepares them for academic reading in college, technical and professional reading in the workplace, and reading about issues of civic importance in the community." So those are just some inspirational words from the Massachusetts Curriculum Framework that I think should underpin our English Language Arts curriculum as well. I have a couple of specific questions. So my understanding is that novels are included in the Sabas learning package that I expect you to approve today. I would like to hear more about how many novels are included and whether they're paper copies, whether they will be used during class, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vajean. Ms. Stanley, can I get a time check?
Seven minutes left.
Okay. Our next speaker is Chris Thomas.
Members of the board, Chris Thomas, Christiansburg. Are we seriously going to argue that America is not rooted in white supremacy and oppression? I understand that my friends on the right haven't cracked a book since the Nixon administration, but even a cursory survey of American history reveals that slavery, segregation, and racism has defined the long arc of the American story since 1619 into the present. has defined the long arc of the American story since 1619 into the present. Are we seriously going to argue that white folks don't have privilege, that white people don't get jobs easier because of their skin color or their white-sounding names? To hear my friends on the right tell it, these are lies told by the Privilege Institute, but they aren't opinions, these are statements of fact. The National Bureau of Economic Research did a study showing that simply changing the names on resumes from Lakeisha to Lakin or from Deshaun to Dennis increases callbacks by 50%. Now, I don't know the last time y'all looked for a job, but getting 50% more callbacks directly translates into getting more jobs. Do our administrators need to understand what white privilege means? Well, I mean, are black kids punished more extremely for the same infractions than white kids? Are black teachers less likely to be hired into our school system than white ones? If they are, that's a problem. And if they're not, that's great, but we have, and I cannot stress this enough, hard data showing that we are then bucking a trend, and we're bucking it through hard work. What we've seen here tonight is a parade of people who simply do not know what they're talking about and who are hoping that by throwing a bunch of buzzwords from AM radio around, they can scare you into believing that MCPS is part of some vast insidious conspiracy. It would be hilarious if we hadn't seen this show before. It's the enemy within. It's the conspiracy of rot. It's the academics peddling an ideology of ivory tower generosity, and it always ends in the same place. Give it time, they'll be up here ranting about blood and soil before too long. Never believe that they are completely unaware of the absurdity of their replies. They know that their remarks are frivolous and open to challenge, but they are amusing themselves, for it is their adversary who is obliged to use words responsible since he believes in words. They have the right to play. They even like to play with discourse, because by giving ridiculous reasons, they discredit the seriousness of their interlocutors. They delight in acting in bad faith, since they seek not to persuade by sound argument, but to intimidate and disconcert. And if you press them too closely, they will abruptly fall silent, loftily indicating by some phrase, "The time for argument is past." If you know your history, you know where that's from, and I shouldn't have to tell you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Seeing no one else signed up, public address is closed. All right, and next up are our consent items. If no one wishes to move an item out of consent, we will consider these items approved. Okay, great. Next up are the financial reports. Do I have a motion to approve the payment of bills as presented?
Second.
Ms. Franklin and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gettrich?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. That leads us to our business meeting, and first up is our report from Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Hudson. On this Teacher Appreciation Day, I extend my deepest gratitude to the extraordinary educators who serve the students and families of the Montgomery County Public Schools. Our teachers are the heart of this school division. They are dedicated professionals whose passion, resilience, and compassion shape the lives of our children every single day. Teaching is much more than a profession. It's a calling, whether guiding a student to a complex math problem, nurturing a love of reading, offering encouragement on a difficult day, or inspiring dreams for the futures for the future. Our teachers make an indelible impact on the lives they touch every day. We recognize and celebrate all you do, not only this week, but every day. Thank you for believing in our students, going above and beyond, and being the foundation of academic excellence and personal growth across all of our schools. Simply put, as the school superintendent, I just want to say thank you. In addition to that, I also had the privilege today of attending CTE Signing Day at Auburn High School. It was great to see the students recognized for their outstanding work in the trades and their commitment to career and technical education. Our CTE programs are second to none, and something this division should be extremely proud of. Just as in FYI, we are currently exploring some options for conducting an energy audit for the division to learn how we can save money through more efficient use of our utilities and energy. We plan to present an idea on this with some more specifics at a future board meeting, but I wanted to give everyone a heads up. And also, we recently shared a survey on my performance as school superintendent, and I encourage everyone to complete it so I can continue to grow and best meet our community needs. The link can be found on our district website in the Superintendent section, and we will also put it out on social media. Lastly, I just want to remind everyone that we have an early release date tomorrow due to some small concert event or something like that taking place at Virginia Tech tomorrow evening. Thank you, Chair Hudson.
Next up, Michelle Bronze and Rebecca King-Mallory with the Community Health Center of the New River Valley will share a presentation on a school-based health center.
Thank you. Now, will you operate that for me or right here? Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. We are here today to just share some information and hopefully education around the work that we do at the Community Health Center of the New River Valley. So I am Michelle Bronze. I'm the CEO of that organization. I've been with it for 20 years. This is Dr. Rebecca King-Mallory, who is our Chief Medical Officer at the clinic, so we are both going to be sharing the podium and sharing a little bit of information about our work. Let me start just by saying a little bit of background of who we are, in case you're not familiar with us. We have been in this community for decades. We started out, if you're familiar, as the free clinic of the New River Valley back in 1981, and 10 years ago converted to a new business model called a federally qualified healthcare center. So, in short, a community health center. We are just down the street. Our main headquarters at 215 Roanoke Street, but I have three other clinics, one in Parisburg, one in Dublin, and one in Pulaski County High School, which we opened two years ago, and that is why I'm here today, to talk with you a little bit about the benefits of a clinic in a school system. So a school-based health system center is exactly what it indicates. It is typically a primary care clinic located within the confines of a school. In our case, we also provide much-needed dental care. We began serving Giles County about four years ago, and two years ago moved into Pulaski County High School. We serve all of the children who want to come to see us, staff and faculty. We provide more care than the school nurses are able to under regulation, because we are a standalone clinic. As a nonprofit organization, we serve many people in Montgomery County already, those who are underserved, uninsured, but also those who are insured. So we see Medicaid and Medicare patients, as well as you with your Anthem or your Optima or your Aetna. And that allows for us to have a separate funding stream to support our services and to write off those services that we do provide for those individuals who have nothing to pay us. So in essence, when we changed our business model 10 years ago, we maintained our mission as a nonprofit organization of keeping the doors wide open for anyone who walked in. We turned no one away due to an inability to pay. But now we serve an even greater audience. Anyone who walks in with any insurance can see us, and if you know, if you have Medicare, if you have Medicaid in this community, it's very difficult to find a primary care provider, let alone a dentist who will see you if you have Medicaid coverage. Dentists and physicians are able to, under law, cap their payer mix, cap the mix of individuals that they see. And if you aren't able to get into a private practice office, we are that safety net that catches you. We have grown and grown and grown in the last 20 years that I've been there, and in fact, as an aside, are currently undergoing a capital campaign to build a new facility. We purchased land in 2020 and 2021 at the end of Acres Farm Road across from the Waffle House and Horn Funeral Home, at the end of that cul-de-sac there where there are medical buildings currently. There are three plots, and in three weeks, we're going to have a groundbreaking on that facility, and we hope to relocate from 215 Roanoke Street into this facility on Acres Farm Road. We are quadrupling our space there. We were going from six dental operatories to 16. We'll be going from eight exam rooms to about 18 or so. We also provide behavioral health and substance use services. So as an aside, we are also undertaking that big project right now. I believe Dr. Bregan was at a recent meeting where he heard a discussion about our Pulaski Initiative and talked to Dr. King-Mallory about it and invited us to come and just educate you a little bit about what we're doing. These are the current services that we provide in these school systems. We do not have a physical location in Giles County, but we do mobile work. So we mobily deliver dental services to each of the schools. We coordinate with the school nurses. This is not a competition with school nurses. They are very welcoming to us to come to their facility. They see us as an extra arm, an extra set of hands for them. And we've had great success in Pulaski County, actually being in the building and providing both medical and dental services as well. Please feel free to ask questions anytime. I'm going to let Dr. King-Mallory take over, though, as we talk about the process behind how we do this for students, staff, and faculty. Thank you. So currently, in Pulaski County High School, all students, staff, and faculty are eligible to be patients. All teachers and faculty members are provided with patient packets where they can sign up and register to be patients with us, and then they also have applications that they can send home with students who are interested. So you might say, well, how do you see kids in the school without their parents being there with them? And we obtain consent for treatment ahead of time. So patients and their parents can do this online. The school nurse has consent forms as well that they help us facilitate getting signed. We have email links and text links that we can send to parents to obtain consent. And then any patient who's already established with our main clinics can also be seen as long as they're a student or staff or faculty member. As Michelle said, we accept all insurances, and we also offer sliding fee discount schedules. So what this means is if patients are at 200% or below the federal poverty limit, then they're eligible for our sliding scale. And so generally, our prices for services range anywhere from completely free to $40 or so on the higher end. We have sliding fee discount schedules for all of our services, including medical, behavioral health, and dental. Patients do get billed for services. We do not receive any payment from students, though, in the clinic, and no one has ever turned away for being unable to pay. So we may send them a bill, but if they call us and they say, hey, we can't do this, we will work with them with a payment plan. But again, it's not one of those things where we say, you can't reschedule with us until you pay your bill. There's lots of studies out there about the benefits of school-based health centers. So one of the greatest ones, in my opinion, as a parent, is that parents get to stay at work, or they get to stay wherever they are during the day, and they're not forced to go pick up their kid from school and then take them to an outside clinic. Students can stay at school. And so the way that this works is students from any of the schools in Pulaski County High School get transported to the high school clinic. The bus actually takes them, so there might be a little five-year-old kindergartner who needs her well-child check, and the bus takes them to the high school. Our nurse meets them at the bus, walks them to the clinic. They can do their well-child check right then, give them any vaccines that they're due for, do any lab work, anything that they need. We do this all in communication with the guardian, and then the school bus picks them back up and takes them to school. So it's a pretty cool process. This decreases transportation barriers for the students. As you can imagine, a lot of students in Pulaski County and Giles County schools have transportation barriers. It also reduces absenteeism, so they can go to a quick appointment and get right back to class. The studies do show that it reduces dropout rates, and there's fewer disciplinary problems in students who have access to these services within the school, and it results in better academic outcomes. So these are some of the services that we're able to provide. We currently do the Department of Education physicals for bus drivers, for all of the Pulaski County High School bus drivers. We can do well-child exams and sick visits. So if there's a child in school that has a sore throat, they first contact the school nurse, just like we would anywhere else, and then the school nurse kind of triages them. And if they say, hey, yeah, I think you need to be treated for strep or seen for this, I'm concerned, then they call the parent, and they say, hey, do you want to come pick them up from school, or do you want them to see the provider at the community health center clinic? We can do lab work and immunizations. We can do family planning. We can do sexual health education, testing, screening, contraceptive care. It's essentially whatever fits the school district and what people want us to provide. We also do chronic disease management, and we can do sports and school physicals, so that's really helpful. So whenever we have kids who, you know, need to, they're last minute getting their physical done for whatever reason it might be, they can't start school until they get their physical done, we can bring them right in and get that knocked out for them. Another thing that's been pretty beneficial is concussion follow-ups. So for the sports players who get injured during the game, we're able to follow them pretty quickly after that. And then we can also offer behavioral health services, both from a medical standpoint and from a counseling standpoint. This is our van that you see here. This is how we offer mobile dental services, and the hygienist and the dental assistant pack up the equipment. We've got a mobile table and cleaning hygiene supplies, and they go from school to school. And we schedule the kids ahead of time, and they do their cleanings. And then if they need treatment completed, like extractions or cavities filled, then we're able to get them hooked up with treatment. We can do saline and fluoride as well. And as I said, we can also provide counseling services with our licensed clinical social workers, our licensed practical counselors. We work alongside in our VCS within the other schools. These are just some pictures of what our clinic in Pulaski County High School looks like. So that first one on the top left is the waiting area. We just installed a TV. We have age-appropriate showings for the children who are waiting for their dental procedures here. We have one medical exam room. We have a lab there on the bottom left, and then that bottom-right picture is the dental And so again, our purpose is to meet students where they are, as well as staff and faculty. We want to be the least disruptive as possible and get them back to school when we're able to do that. This middle picture is showing our ability to do telehealth appointments as well. Near to date, in Pulaski and Giles County Public Schools, we've served 237 individual patients for medical services and 281 patients for dental services. So how did we get this started? Giles County Public Schools' principal at the high school approached us initially to find out if we would be interested in coming on board and working with them. We said yes, and that's how it got started there in Pulaski County High School, much to my pleasant surprise. Ms. Megan Atkinson, who is now, I guess, a part of Montgomery County Public Schools and used to work at Pulaski County, approached us and asked us a couple of years ago if we would be interested in doing this. It was a personal mission of hers to do this for her students. She was over, as you are aware, probably, the Technical Education Building, which is where we are located in the high school. And we are also able to collaborate with the students there who are, for example, in the NA class, the nursing assistant classes, CNA classes. So we provide part of the lectures for their
So we provide part of the lectures for their curriculum. We have donated some of the, I think... Yeah, if you want to talk about TDA, do you want to mention the TDA?
Yeah, TDA vaccines, you know, tetanus, dithyri and pertussis. We also developed a dental assistant training program where we work with the CTE program, and we trained a student to become a dental assistant. It was a paid position, so essentially she can walk out of high school and find a job as a trained dental assistant.
Pulaski County found a space for us in their building that they were not using very much, decided it was a great space for us for the footprint we needed, which they wanted both medical and dental care. It's not necessary to have both services. We could just have primary care. But they gave us that beautiful space, renovated it for us at their cost, and then we provide everything else at our cost. So it's our staff, I pay them, the nurses, the doctors. You saw in that photo there a pediatric nurse practitioner, who's the individual who goes, goes over to the schools. We pay for our own insurance, our own supplies, and really, all the school does at that point is just clean the facility after, after hours. So that's how we got started. It has been successful. We showed you some data, but we've also just, I think, been able to change some lives. It has really assisted kids who were, had never been to the dentist. I mean, seventeen, eighteen-year-olds who were getting ready to graduate couldn't get a job, and we were able to fix their teeth. And one young gentleman, we helped sign up for Medicaid because he was leaving his household, and once his teeth were fixed, he went and got a job at McDonald's. And we're able to do that through the provision of healthcare and dental care for these kids who may have not experienced that before. And in Pulaski, as you know, it's a great need, as in Giles County as well. So wanted to give you a little bit of that background. Wanted to tell you, this is something that's not new. Community health centers have been around since the 1950s in this country and have been providing care in school systems across this country since the 70s. So we are thrilled that we're able to be that first in the New River Valley and would happily welcome conversations with you all as the supervisors moving forward if this is something that you think you would like to speak with us about.
Great, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
I'll open the floor for questions and comments from the board.
Can I start?
Please.
So I was like, "This sounds too good to be true. What's the catch behind this? Sounds like there's no catch, except for you're trying to help people." And I hope we can find space for it. What is the, the bus to transport students? How does that work, especially in a district our size?
Right, so it's not necessary. It is something Rob Graham decided he wanted to do for his school system. So we actually provided care the first year without transportation. It was really just to the high school students. And he talked to his Board of Supervisors, and they decided that they would be able to just institute their bus drivers during the course of the day and just, I think, other staff who also drive those vehicles that work during the day, and make them available. So when the school nurse at the elementary school calls and says, "I've got, you know, little Susie here who might have a strep throat, we'd like to send her over, we can work her in." And that was really all Mr. Graham's initiative to handle that part of this. So it's not necessary. We can certainly put ourselves in any school and see just those students, staff, and faculty. But I think if there was a way that we could provide transportation in an area, let's say Shawsville, Elliston area, that would allow all of those kids and staff and faculty from that particular region, that geography, to visit it, it would certainly, I think, help be, be part of the greater good. We're a nonprofit organization. Our mission is to serve anyone who comes in the door. We have not let that go. So really, this is not a money-making, you know, project for us. We barely do. If we break even, I'm happy. But this is part of who we are and what we do for this community as community health center. So there, right, there's, there's no, you know, okay, what, you know, the other shoe's going to drop. It's not. We need space. We need it renovated and medically appropriate and soundproof for us, but that's about it.
And you said, "Folks from the community?"
No, that, that, it's not out of bounds, but it was the choice of the school system. So as Dr. King Mallory said a moment ago, the services we provide in each of the counties, the supervisors tell us what they want us to do. In both of those cases, they said, "Nobody from, we don't want parents. We don't want community members walking in." It's a safety issue in their eyes. So it's just the school family.
Thank you.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yeah, it sounds great. I'm, uh, I'm really excited about it. The, for our county, would you expect multiple sites or just one site in the county?
You know, I think one, right. I think at least one to start with.
Yeah, what, I would say one to start with, and then depending on the need. That's kind of what we've done in Pulaski. Depending on the need, we could always expand at that point based on what you all's wishes were.
And because you have a facility in the county across the, from the high school, would you want to incorporate that facility into the, this type of program? Or would it just be at the schools themselves?
I think, I think it's in the best interest of the patients to have it within the school system. Then you're not having to, you know, as we indicated, one of the benefits is the parents not having to come and leave work and potentially get, you know, canned or something if they're an hourly worker. The child is not missing school as much. So having it within the walls of the, of the school, I think, is the best way to go.
We could always consider, though, with Christiansburg High School being so close to where the new building is, have arranging transportation from the high school to the new building for those students, for sure.
No, thank you. Ms. Frisell?
To echo Ms. Franklin and Dr. Roundtree's sentiments, I also feel like there's no, no losing, all winning to this, this idea. Thank you so much for taking your time to come here tonight and tell us about your, your work. I'm really excited to be able to provide that to kids in our community. My comment is really more directed towards Dr. Bregan. If we do decide to create this kind of partnership, I would really like the Division to consider developing a community school and taking advantage of Virginia Code 22.1-199.7. I've sent this to Dr. Bregan in an email before, but I wanted to say it tonight as well. That particular framework, whichever school ends up housing the clinic space, were to become a community school, there's just extra support from the state for grants and, and other things. In Roanoke, Fallon Park Elementary School has a partnership with Carillion, and they, they did that community school distinction as well. And I think it may just lead to more opportunities. So thank you again so much.
Ms. Bond?
Thank you, and I appreciate the fact that it doesn't matter the income level because there's a lot of families that are above poverty, poverty levels that get no assistance, no funding, no help, and those are sometimes the hardest ones to reach. So I appreciate that. One of my questions was along with someone else that asked it about the bus because I, I kind of felt like, okay, if it were in Eastern Montgomery and you've got someone from the Auburn community to take one student, not that they're not important enough to do that, so, but, but it kind of just doesn't sound real feasible to put one child on a school bus and transport them down because you've got the cost of the bus, the cost of the bus driver, things like that. So is it not another situation that someone could use just a vehicle of some sort to transport a child, someone that's been recognized to be able to do that job?
Sure.
Is that an opportunity? Okay, so that is, so you don't have to use a full diesel bus.
Correct, correct. And that would be an obligation that the camp, the, the school system would absorb? Absolutely.
Okay, I didn't know if it was a legal issue there or there or something like that. But that could be worked out to that extent.
Correct.
Great, and, oh, also, if, say if you were housed, let's just say in one of the schools at Eastern Montgomery, would any school in the county students be able to attend? I'm hearing that correctly.
Correct, that's how we currently function. That would be up to you all to make that decision.
Right, understand, I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly. Okay, great, thank you so much, it sounds wonderful.
Ms. Pardon?
This is amazing. First off, thank you for your passion and compassion to serve. Much appreciated, much needed here. Some districts may be more than others, but as Ms. Bond pointed out, we do have, we do have those families in all of our districts that, that need help. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that. And I just want to make sure, well, the fact that you all can not only provide the medical and the dental, but you can also encompass the counseling, which we are in dire need of, and our, and our students and, and our, our whole administration actually can benefit from that if needed. But to help educate our students as well, I mean, I can't think of a better combination. And what a, what a win-win for MCPS. So I am ecstatic about it and would love to move forward with it. But I did want to make sure that I heard you correctly because, you know, we, we deal with budget and money all the time, and that's a very huge issue for us because everything is important, and, you know, we always have to make tough decisions. So did I hear you correctly when you said how the monetary part of it? Because I know, I know that nurse practitioners and dentists and those type of people get paid very well. So if you don't mind just repeating that part and maybe what would be, what would we, our, our part as far as that part of it would go? I just want to make sure that I've, I've got that understood.
Absolutely, and it is your, your budget time after all, right? We, it is our staff. So I, I employ between the four clinics about a hundred staff members, and so our staff would rotate through the clinic. We primarily keep it to just a small handful of individuals, nurses and physicians and dentists, who enjoy working with children and know how to do that. But they rotate through, so they are my staff, employed by me, paid by me, insured by me. And so that is not anything that the school system would have to, to worry about. Really, the obligation for the school system is just to find the space and, and create the space that we need.
Well, I would vote we find the space somewhere. I would have this in every school if we could. But if we could even just get started with one, that would, that would make me happy, and it would be such a benefit to not only our students, but to our, to our employees as well. So thank you guys so much for coming and sharing this, and I'm very excited. Thank you.
Dr. Gettrud?
Thank you as well for the, for this presentation. I echo the sentiments of my, my fellow board members. I don't know, Superintendent Bregan, if you've thought of, you know, we, we have a budget now, and we've, we've approved that budget, so would we have to wait a full year? If, if the, the school board wants to move forward? Because it seems like there's a consensus of the school board for doing something, you know, for, for moving forward.
I, I don't think we'd have to wait, you know, I wait for the consent from the school board, but what I've, correct me if I misunderstood, but the major thing that we have to contribute is a space that's appropriate. We can do that within our operating budget.
And the renovation, you'd have to renovate the space to make it amenable to a clinic? Do you, I, I, do you know how much it costs for, for converting that space into a clinic?
I can tell you the Giles space, which you were saying, the Pulaski space there, and the Pulaski space is probably about a third larger. They spent about thirty thousand dollars in Giles County.
Okay.
I actually am not sure what they spent in Pulaski County.
Okay. I would, I would love to, if we do move forward, to make sure that students across the division had access to the clinic. I know there's certain communities that may need it more than others, but even in my district, I mean, you have graduate students who have young children, and, and they don't have a lot of money either. So if we do move forward, I would, I would urge us to do it in a way that made it available to students across the county. Thank you.
I don't have any questions myself. The ones that I had were already answered, I guess. My, it definitely sounds like there's a lot of, of interest from the board here. I guess my question would be to Dr. Bregan, what would be kind of next steps? Seems like, like maybe a suggestion from the administration about what you might, where you might want to put it, what it might look like, work through some of these, these things for us to respond to and give you feedback?
Yeah, if I get a tacit approval from the majority of the board to move forward, I would try to set up another meeting with you all, and then I'd come back to you as quickly as I can with specifics, you know, and get the ball rolling.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I ask one more question? How does it work if, say, you have a parent that's upset with the services that was rendered to the child? Because we know that's something that absolutely always happens. So how, how do they, is there a waiver that they sign off on or?
Yes, so whenever the, the guardian signs a child up for services and they fill out the patient registration packet, there's a consent form in that packet that says, "I give consent for my child to be treated in my absence." However, we always call them before the appointment. We try our best to reach them. Now, if, if a child walks in from the high school and they're having chest pain or they're vomiting, we're going to go ahead and treat them and then try to reach the parent. So we reach the guardian first. We say, "Hey, this is what's going on. We're going to see them if that's okay." We get verbal consent again. We see the child, come up with a plan, and then we call the parent or guardian back and say, "This is what we've observed. This is our diagnosis, and this is our treatment plan if you're in agreement." We really don't get too many...
Negative feedback?
Yeah. We really don't. Because, because we try... ...patient with them, so we really don't have any issues.
I can't think of one time that I've been told that. We, we spend a lot of time making sure that we saturate the schools with the forms. We're not going to see a child if that parent has not signed off on that consent form. And that is very, very important to us and very important to the parent. So we, we go to the summer orientations, we go to some PTA meetings. We, we become a part of the fabric of the school system. We have done that in both of those counties. We go to the football games, we set up at their fairs. We can become well-known to those kids and, and develop a good relationship with the, with the faculty and, and the children. So we, we really try hard to make sure that this works. We absolutely will not see a child if that parent has not signed that consent form ahead of time.
Ms. Frisell? Thank you, Mike Penny, I'm sorry.
The reality is, in a district our size, we really would need four clinics. That's just the bottom line. And what that would look like to be equitable to all of our families and students and staff. So if we were able to do more than one, how, what of a prob, what kind of problems would that be as far as your staffing?
One, one is doable because we have the staffing for it currently. I would have to hire more staff, which takes time, as well as obviously looking at the impact on the budget. So with two school systems under our belt, I still would highly recommend that we go to the one that you all choose that we begin in first. Work through the humps and the bumps and the barriers the first school year, and then reevaluate after that and see how it goes. We, I can give you an example. Giles didn't go as well as we thought it was going to. It is an extraordinarily small community. There's 17,000 residents in the entire county. We were not as well utilized as we thought we would be, and we had to cut back services there. We learned that in a year. The Pulaski County School System Clinic has grown within that school system. And Doctor, and Mr. Graham saw the opportunity to, to, to bus, and that made a lot of difference across the board. So you, you're right, this is a huge school system. I can tell you that our data from our Christiansburg Clinic shows that we serve the majority of patients in Montgomery County from the, from the Elliston-Shawsville areas. Those are the most needy patients that come to us in our, in our clinic down the street. That's why I mentioned... That's why I mentioned that earlier, that perhaps starting there might be, you know, the one that we take the bite out of first.
Thank you.
Board, any other questions or comments? Can I get a thumbs up if we want to pursue and get more information? How many thumbs you got? All right, great.
Well, thank you, we are.
Thank you so much.
Happy to, look forward to working with you.
Awesome. All right. Next up, Michelle Knotts, our Supervisor of School Nutrition Programs, will provide an update on the MCPS summer feeding programs.
Good evening, Board members, Board Chair Dr. Bragan, Ms. Osborne, and Ms. Stanley. Tonight, I'd like to talk to you about some changes that we're going to move forward with and make to our summer feeding programs, which will help to expand more access in, in some creative ways, just expanding meal access in general to our students. So, the dates that you see there, our summer school is June 2nd through June 26th. Montgomery Central's a little bit shorter, they're the 2nd through the 18th. And typically, what we have done is the traditional model, which is all of our schools offer free breakfast and lunch to all of the students that participate, and then that is a billable charge that we, the food service charges back to the school board. The new model that we are going to endeavor on is we have eight of our schools that qualify for the Summer Food Service Program, SFSP. And there's also another program called Rural Noncongregate. And what that program does, I'll get a little bit more into that in another slide, but it takes, it's based off of free and reduced percentages to sort of qualify for these, both programs, you have to have fifty percent or more. And then it also takes a look at area eligibility to help to try to expand these benefits as far out as possible. So, those following eight schools are, who has qualified, so Eastmont Elementary, Prices Fork Elementary, Shawsville, Falling Branch, Montgomery Central, Bellevue, Christiansburg Elementary, and Christiansburg Primary. The following schools that will continue to operate under that traditional model where the kids eat for free and it is built back are those following eight there, Harding, Christiansburg Middle, Blacksburg Middle, Margaret Beeks, Gilbert Linkus Elementary School, Kips, Auburn Elementary School, and Auburn Middle School. So, the Summer Food Service Program, or what is now being called Sun Meals. So, qualifying summer school locations can claim all of the meals that we serve to the children, and the rates there are two dollars and eighty-four cents for every breakfast that is served and four dollars and forty-three cents for the lunch. All qualifying schools must open to the community for breakfast and lunch Monday through Thursday. Those community hours are going to be nine o'clock in the morning until ten, and for breakfast, it's going to be twelve forty-five to one, twelve forty-five to one forty-five. In the breakfast, at the breakfast hour for the community, the kids have already come through the breakfast line, they've gone up, they're back to their classrooms. It's a grab-and-go model for breakfast. So, then we will open up, like I said, to the community. They'll check in with the main office, like any visitor would, and then we'll be shown to the cafeteria. Same thing for lunch, the children have already had their lunch, they're in the classrooms, and we open it up to the community. A little bit different for Montgomery Central as far as the hours, eight-thirty to nine for breakfast for the community and twelve-fifteen to twelve-forty-five for lunch. When the community comes, it allows any adult group organization to come in that have children that are eighteen years or younger. They must eat the food on the premise, and they must be supervised by the adult or the group guidance, whatever that group may be, during that time. All those meals as well, or can be, will be claimed at the free meal rate. So, I want to talk a little bit about rural noncongregate feeding, something different and unique here. It allows meals to be sent home or picked up for children in what's classified as rural, those rural, rural areas outside of the traditional group setting. It cannot be combined with congregate feeding. So, for the Summer Food Service Program qualified school sites, each Thursday during summer school, we are going to pack up weekend meal bags. It'll consist of three breakfasts and three lunch, and we are going to have those on carts at the areas of where the children are being dismissed and to go up, up onto buses or in the car, car rider lines, and we are going to be encouraging and offering those bags to anyone that wants those bags, each Thursday during summer school for the eight sites that I mentioned before. Also, we will include in there the menu, there's going to be cooking instructions in there, food safety, nutritional information. So, what happens when summer school's over? Because it's only for that month of June, pretty much. So, what I looked into was this rural congregate, how can I qualify some sites and then maybe turn those into pickup sites? And through the work with the VDOE, we went through quite a few exercises. We identified the three sites that would qualify for this will be Christiansburg Elementary School, Bellevue, and Shawsville Middle School, trying to spread it out the best we can through, through our community. And so, for four consecutive Mondays in July, we are going to open up those sites, and the hours are actually going to be eleven until one o'clock for the pickup times. And anybody can come and receive a week's worth of meals on those four Wednesdays, seven breakfasts and seven lunch. Children do not need to be present, it's kind of almost on an honor system. But it's just a way to reach out to the people that truly have a need or can use some help with groceries, basically, and getting through the week. We will simply just ask for the names of the children and the ages. They don't have to, it's not just for Montgomery County children, it can be children from anywhere, and anyone, it could be somebody visiting. If it's just, if the child is eighteen years or younger, can come and pick up these meals. This service is available for any family or group that has children, again, just eighteen years or younger. So, how are we going to get the word out? Marketing is absolutely key to, to the success of, of these new programs. So, been working again with VDOE, I'll show you an example here of some of the posters that they are providing for us. But here's an example of two of them. We're going to have these posters, these are going to be turned into banners. We're going to have yard signs. We will add to them, if I don't get enough from the VDOE for free, we'll add to it because that is an allowable expense. I'll be working with Andrew on our public media release. We're going to get this out on our district website, the individual schools' websites. I am very confident that we'll see local news coverage on this as well. Flyers will be posted in our schools, we're going to send flyers home and information in those take-home weekend bags that's going on during the month of June to help to advertise what's going to be going on in July. And then just with community helping to spread the word. Questions?
Great, thank you for that presentation, outstanding. Open the floor for any questions or comments.
I'll start. So, I want to thank you for everything you've been doing to help feed our students, and this program to help feed our community is just incredible. So, thank you, and anybody else who's been helping with this is just amazing, and I want as many flyers and yard signs and banners as I can get.
Will do, thank you.
Change the order, Dr. Gettrick.
Great, thank, I want to thank you as well and your team for investing in this program, I think it's amazing. Just two really quick questions, the one's an observation, the question is, where is the funding coming from for these programs? Just so people know, who's, who's paying the bill for these?
Well, for these programs, they're reimbursable meals, so we, we're going to be claiming them monthly, and then we get those reimbursements back through the USDA.
Okay, through USDA, okay, so the federal government?
Pass it down through the USDA, through the Virginia Department of Education actually pays those.
Okay, great, so this is, our tax dollars going to work?
Yes.
For us, for the community. The other is just an observation, when I think about diversity, equity, and inclusion, I don't just think about race, I look at this and I say, "That's also what equity is about." And so, I'm, but I'm thrilled that we would be able to do this for the community tonight, and I think it's just wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Parton.
Thank you so much. We have struggled with this for a long time in our community and different districts. I'm so glad to see how well diverse that these areas are, so anyone who feels like they need this can come. They're not having to drive all the way down the mountain, or they're not having to drive to the other side of Montgomery County to get what they need. So, so thank you for that. And thanks to, I'm assuming it's going to be your staff? I didn't know if any of our staff was going to be participating in this over the summer or not, but, but whoever participates, I mean, that's, that's a huge commitment, and it's just comforting to me to know, because I always worry during the summer, particularly about our students and the ones that, that need food, and our families that need food. Because I do know, at least at school, they are getting something. So, this does provide a much, you know, consolation to me to know that, I, I know when COVID hit and we were providing the meals, and what a great, you know, what a great response we got to that, and how much it meant to the community. I hate, we had to go through that to be able to provide that, but we saw the need with that. And so, I'm glad to see that we're still looking at that. But I, I wasn't sure as far as, as staffing, because I know you are tied in with us, but I, I didn't know how that part of it was going to work.
Well, I hope that the problem I have is that we have utilized all of SEDEXO's staff, and I have to go to Dr. Bragan and say, "I need my MCPS people."
Okay.
How do we work out those contract days?
Okay.
That would be a great problem to have.
And would you also consider, I, I know it's with food handling, so I know you have to have their special kind of requirements for preparation and handling and that type of thing, and courses and classes you have to take to be able to, to do that type of thing legally. But do you, would you consider volunteers? Would that be something that maybe community members might if they, if they so felt the need to volunteer to help?
Absolutely, I actually already had a principal reach out to me and asked if she could volunteer in July to pass out those meals.
Okay, perfect, so we can kind of get that volunteer part out as well, because this would also help the students who need volunteer work
for their ACEs or other, other different reasons to, to help and to help within their community, so that's good to hear. Yes, absolutely.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Ms. Bond.
Can, I'm sure this is probably just a given, but just to make sure I'm reading correctly, like in the July, when they can come and pick up on the Monday, seven meals for the week, am I, am I reading that correctly?
Seven breakfasts and seven.
Seven breakfasts and lunch meals. Is that one per student in the family, like say if there's four children in that family? Would they be allowed or allotted four of those, or is that one for the family?
It would be for four.
Okay.
So, it's one, it's, well, a seven, seven days worth of breakfast and seven days worth of lunch is probably going to equate to two bags.
Okay.
But we're going to get creative where we can do some bulk options, such as half gallons of milk as opposed to pints, thirty-two ounce jugs of juice instead of the little juice cups, just so it doesn't become cumbersome.
Right.
But no, it is one bag per child.
Thank you.
Ms. Purcell.
Thank you so much, Ms. Knotts, I know you gave me a little preview of this a couple of weeks ago. It's extremely exciting to be able to offer this to our community, and thank you so much for your hard, hard work on it. Really, the only comment or suggestion I have, again, gets kicked back to Dr. Bragan. It might be worth reaching out to Ms. Hill and the, and the county if there's some kind of other ways to, to spread the word. I feel like the July feeding, the July pickup sites, you know, that might be also a great opportunity for the mobile library to be, you know, at those school sites as well, just having multiple, multiple things for people to do to try and, you know, draw them in and, and take advantage of these services, and there may be other, other things as well. But thank you so much, Ms. Knotts, for all of your hard work.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yeah, so I heard that there's going to be flyers and signs in the end of June for the July program. Is there also going to be flyers and signs at the end of May for the June program?
There's not flyers made for the June program. It's, it's considered a hybrid is what we're doing. We had to get a little creative in order for it to actually work out, but it did, so I don't think VDOE has the template ones, but there's no reason why my department can't make them.
Right.
And get those circulated out. So, yes.
Yeah, and then, uh, just a question, so any adult organization, so like churches could have a van that picks up kids, brings them to the school, they can check them in, they can eat their meal, and then they can go back and drop them off wherever they need to be dropped off? Is that?
During the community hours, yes.
Okay, and that, that could be churches, YMCA, Kiwanis, Rotary, or if an ACE volunteer that, because all of our ACE volunteers would have graduated high school, so they'd be over eighteen. If they had the means, they could pick up kids, take them, check them in.
Absolutely. They just have to eat, they have to consume the food onsite. In my previous experience, I saw a lot of daycares that were able to get transportation, and they brought the children in every day for a hot breakfast, and, and they came back for lunch. So, it, it, it's, there's a lot of possibilities, but yes, any group, just eighteen years or younger.
Right, yeah, this is awesome, thank you so much.
That's great, I don't have any questions, either I just add my voice to the chorus of thank yous, this is outstanding programs. Board, any other questions or comments?
Yep. Just one, so, do people have to pre-register, or it's just anybody that shows up and you all will just figure out what you need to do?
Kind of like that, yes. The state, you know, in, in the, the language that the state provides, it's until, until quantities are available or until they run out. But we've gotten pretty good at this since COVID, I will say that. We're, we're just, we're, we're very prepared and organized, and there's no pre-registration. We're not going to let anybody leave that shows up and leave with nothing. We might have to get a little creative. COVID, there was a point, there was so many people coming, I was running York County Public Schools at the time, and I was walking out with whole frozen pizzas because I had nothing left. I just turned around, went into the freezers, and just said, "Here you are," and it got them food for, some help with food.
Board, anything else? Great, thank you so much tonight.
Thank you.
All right, next up, the 2025-26 Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the Twenty-First Century Act. Grant application is presented for approval. This was first presented on April 15th, 2025, for a first read. Do I have a motion to approve the 2025 Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the Twenty-First Century Act grant application as presented?
Second.
Ms. Franklin and Ms. Bond, any discussion? Okay, great. Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gettrick?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, the Secondary ELE textbook adoption was presented on April 15th. For a first read, Dr. Lori Comer, Director of Secondary Education, is available for questions if needed. Do I have a motion to approve the recommended textbooks for ELE grades six, six through twelve? Is that what I'm reading there? As presented.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Purcell, any discussion? Okay. Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gettrick?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. The Revised Student Code of Conduct was presented on April 1st for a first read. Willie Howard, our Director of Student Support and Intervention, and Jason Garrettson, our Director of Student Services and Safety, are available for questions if needed. Do I have a motion to approve the Revised Student Code of Conduct as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Purcell and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Sure.
Okay, so, um, as all of us have received a couple of different revisions to our policy by Mrs. uh, Perelski.
Perelski.
Sorry. And I am in agreement with her suggestions as far as the monitoring and the risk, risk ratio, and including the analysis for in-school suspensions also. Because that is a factor when students are out of the classrooms. And just because they're in-school suspension doesn't mean that they're doing what they need to be doing and getting what they need. Also, her, um, the year, the longevity piece, so that we are seeing from year to year how things are going under number two, reporting analysis. And I'll just say, everything that she has recommended, I absolutely agree with, and I think it would do nothing but help strengthen our code.
Guess I would ask the administration, I think we've, we've kind of seen those comments a couple of times. Were they considered as a part of the original, of your, your drafting? And any response to any of that?
Yes, we, we did receive the email. We have had some conversations about it, but based on what we had here, this is what we had shared.
My understanding from when the administration worked on the Code of Conduct policy, they got the feedback, you know, from the administrative team, what we had from the last board meeting, and that's what they put forth. I don't think they included this stuff in that email. You guys are the school board, you guys oversee policy. If you want to all include it, that's a discussion, and if four of you say you want it, then we put it in.
Okay. So I guess we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there a-
An amendment to include these changes to the policy to make sure we are getting as much data and including as many opportunities to make sure we know how students are being monitored. I'll just put it that way.
So that would need to be a friendly amendment to the current motion and second? Yeah. If you want.
I accept Ms. Franklin's amendment. I'm also in agreement with putting the matrix on the website just for transparency reasons.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yeah, just for clarity, we're going to be adding use risk ratios to analyze absenteeism, analyze group difference and in-school suspension using risk ratio, using risk ratio to analyze group difference and administrative responses to student behavior that is minor and relies on principal or teacher interpretation compared to administrative response to more serious and concretely observable student behaviors. And including in the, uh, in the student conduct policy, Montgomery County Public Schools Progressive Discipline Matrix, and then finally, including a statement regarding MCPS compliance with the VDOE policy for development and review as stated in model guidance for positive and preventative code of student conduct policy and alternatives to suspension, page twenty of our student contact. Is that right? That's just all the headlines.
Right. I just said all to try to save time. Yes.
Okay. Second.
It's your motion. Any more discussion?
So would this go back and added and then brought back for another reading? Is that what, okay.
Well, I mean, I think-
I believe you're, you're voting to approve it with that, those additions.
So if we're adding, we're, we're changing what we have because we have had a motion to add. So I'm assuming once those changes are made, am I thinking right that those are brought back?
Well, we didn't agree to consider them at our first read, so now it seems like we are, but-
But if it's changed in the last-
Then everything else we've, if you're adding all this, you are.
Right.
Okay, but we've voted against doing that in previous meetings by saying that we can't do that because that doesn't give everybody an opportunity to, to, to read it and review it. So we kind of said, okay, we're not going to vote on something the, the first time it comes out of the-
Yes, there-
I understand, but it, but we're changing it. We're adding. I'm, I'm just saying that.
So I'm not saying I'm opposed to anything, but I would like to read over, just to make sure that I've got clarification. And I would like to ask, with these additions, are we looking at more time-wise? Not that that's the concern, but are we able to tie any of this into what we, we are already providing? Or how much extra, and are you all going to need the, the other administration to provide you with additional information for these measures if they are added?
I think we're going to need additional time, as well as there may be some changes this summer with legislation. So we have some time that, that'd give us more time to prepare and make sure that this is in here and able for you all to approve.
Dr. Gitry?
I'm in favor of implementing changes as well. I mean, one of the, a couple of items stood out to me. One is the inclusion of in-school suspension because that is a disruption. So I, I'm glad to see that addition. I'm, I'm in favor of all of these. I think the inclusion of the annual review, we do that with some of the other policies. I think that that's, that's fairly typical. I mean, I, I agree, usually you're making small changes at the second reading. I think there's enough of consensus here that we could table that motion, allow the administration to make the changes, and, and bring before the board a clean copy. Because they're, they are more than just tweaking a few words. That would be my recommendation, because there's no reason why we can't just pass this at the next meeting.
So do we table this motion, or do I, do we need a substitute motion?
Yeah, at this point, I mean, I think actually at this point, we need to rescind your motions, right? Who's our, who's our rubber's rules master up here? Okay. Yeah, I do think, I agree with Dr. Gitry. I think in general, we're all supportive of this, but I'm not a fan of, of voting to approve a policy that we're editing on the fly without seeing the final product, right?
And I think with the added complication of new legislation, that you know you're going to need to include anyway.
Give us more time, so-
Instead of clean copy, redline copy and clean copy.
Sure.
Yeah. But I think because the motions, either you have to retract those, those motions, or we have to vote on them, right? Well, if there's a motion that's been seconded, you've got to act on that motion, in my understanding.
I think so.
Your mic's off.
I think since there is a motion and a second, that you would need to rescind those and then do a motion to table.
I agree.
So I move to rescind my original motion and move to table the Code of Conduct until revisions are complete.
Dr. Roundtree, would need to concur as a second? Okay, so we have a motion to table. Do we have a second to table?
So moved.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries to table. Sorry to make you guys go back and do more work, but I do think that those additions will make a positive impact to the Code of Conduct.
Okay.
Caught up. All right. Up and organization chart is presented for review and approval by the board. The previous organization chart is provided for comparison. Do I have a motion to approve the revised organization chart as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Purcell, any discussion?
I had a quick question.
Sure.
And just so I, I know this, I think this was mentioned at a previous meeting, but I just want to make sure that I, I have my information correct. And this is probably more a question to Dr. Bragan. Was it stated, like I thought it was at a previous meeting, that the job descriptions and names were changing, but our policy was, under the derivatives, were not changing?
I'm not sure what specific policy you're-
So whatever the policy is we use for those personnel? Because I thought at one time there was a statement made that was said that our policy wasn't going to change. We were just changing, changing the name and the job description. I'm pretty sure that was stated.
Okay. I, I don't remember the specific reference to a policy change, but I do think when we had Ms. Wright as well as Ms. Woodsetzer present months ago, that they were talking about having the name more accurately reflect what actually transpires in that office and to cover the broader, broader scope of the things that they do. So that is what these changes would reflect, as well as those different job descriptions that accompanied that.
Thank you.
Sure, we can go around. Uh, Dr. Gitry?
Sure. So I'm not in favor of making these changes. I know that there's a, there's been a comparison between public education, K-12, and higher education, and seeing what's happening in higher education, and a fear that that's going to trickle down and to our level. But there are significant differences with higher, what's happening with higher education. There's not a, a right to federal funding. There's a lot more levers that the, the administration can use to, to threaten universities to take away their, their funding. I don't think that we should be backing away from our commitments to diversity, equity, inclusion. I think that we should be faithful to our mission. You know, back in the day of segregation, there were segregationists who said, "Yeah, black children, they have access to public education. It's just down the road in that building down there." And that word equity means something. And if you remove it, and if you just, if you remove it, you're removing a history. You're removing the struggle for civil rights, a struggle of this county. And I just, I urge the administration, this school board, not to back down. We have a role. We've been elected to represent our community. This is different from a governor who controls boards over universities. We have a choice here. And I know that there are these threats out there that they're going to take away five million dollars. We just see what's happening with the lawsuits in Maryland and how the, the administration has been checked and how the administration is trying to use the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four against itself. In, in fact, one of those executive orders that came out after our last discussion relies, uh, we had that certification relying on the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four to threaten to take away funding. Well, there was another executive order that rescinded the authority that that certification had in order to threaten to take away our funding. They're trying to use the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four against itself. And so I just, I urge this board not to make these changes and to stand up for our values and our mission.
Ms. Franklin?
So I agree. Thank you. I have said I don't agree with this from the beginning, and I still don't agree with it. I think it will lead to just what Dr. Gitry said, back to separate but equal. And one of the most shocking things that will happen with that separate but equal will be along socioeconomic lines also. So it will not just be black children, it will be all children who will be separated because they don't have or can't get access to, just like it did in the sixties when school districts shut down because they did not want to integrate. These things are important because diversity and inclusion and equity is not just about race. It's about everybody. So I will, I will not go down this path. And it's unfortunate that the folks in this department do not feel like they are understood about the work that they're doing. And again, as I've repeated, as I said several times, it's because they're not utilized. They're put down in the basement so that there's, people don't know what they do. And they don't know what they do because it means it's not valued. It's that simple. And that needs to change, not the name.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yeah. I don't, I don't understand why there's a portion of our population that thinks diversity, equity, and inclusion are curse words in this society today. We're not, we're not changing what the, the work is, the, we're going to serve the students. But the, uh, the words do have power, and they do have meaning to them. Yeah, I'm, I'm for continuing to keep the, the names of our, our directorships.
Ms. Purcell?
Like I said last time, I am happy to honor the request of Ms. Woodsetzer and Ms. Wright and change the, the titles to better reflect the work that they do for our community.
Ms. Bond?
I think we need to have more discussion about what's, the change should be. I, I agree with Ms. Purcell that it needs to reflect all the work that, that happens in that, so.
I guess I'll, I'll chime in. I mean, certainly I also respect the, the wishes of our administration. I remember the presentation. I thought when it was originally presented to us, it was meant to broaden that program, not to constrain it. And certainly, I think it's kind of spiraled into other, other rationale as, you know, the world has evolved here. But, you know, I mean, we're not changing our mission and beliefs in this process. We're not changing our strategic plan, right? Those things are still there, and I will continue to fight for those, as I think most of the board will. I mean, I think we have to, to acknowledge the world that we're in right now. Who's going to apply for that job? Who's going to apply for a Director of Equity in the state of Virginia right now? I think our staff are worried about even posting that job right now. I mean, I think we got to be realistic. I mean, I'm not in favor of it either, but I think if we're going to continue to do the best for all of our students to, again, this isn't just about racism and the things that have been portrayed. And there's a lot of equity needed across our, our division. We talked about a lot of that tonight when, talking about access to food and access to, to medical services, right? Like, I think that these, you know, we need to continue to prioritize that. And I, I don't know how we fill that position if we don't adjust our chart to match reality, but that's my opinion. We have a vote and a second on the table. If we don't agree with it, then I guess we're keeping it as is. I guess we'll have to discuss.
So.
Any more discussion?
Yes. So when we removed those words, it wasn't that long ago that the word diversity began being used in this district. And when we start changing those words, we may say we still have the same policies, we still have the same goals and missions or whatever, but slowly, I'm telling you, they will start to erode. Those words will be challenged and those words will go away too. When it comes to feeding people, it's a whole different ballgame. Because I guarantee you, there are people in this community, if they could, where the food for these people would be over here and the food for these people would be over here, just like it was before. Because unfortunately, equity and diversity mean something different to some people. I lived through segregated schools and what it was like to integrate and having to battle just to be seen, more or less to be educated, because we don't want to use those words. So, yeah, we, we can say it'll be hard to fill a position, it'll be hard to do this, whatever, but it's, it's so much harder to put these words back once they go away because it was hard to get them there.
Can I ask a, a question? I thought that we had received a follow-up document from the office and they wanted to add equity back into the title. And, and that document was a Google Doc and there was comparisons made to the universities and how they're changing names and some of them are removing those offices. And, and did, did we receive a Google Doc like that? I thought I saw, I saw something.
I'm not familiar with what you're talking about, Dr. Gitry. We did share something I got from the Office of Diversity and Equity about what was happening around the state and the divisions that were, had changed their names and some of the people that were in the list serve that are no longer there, the positions are there, or the names have been changed or removed. If that's what you're referring to?
Yeah. Okay, I thought I, I saw a recommendation of adding equity back in because I know that we had a community member make a, a strong statement of including, retaining equity, even if you add access and opportunity. So I thought that was maybe a response to that suggestion from the dialogue on race.
I'd have to double check on that. I don't remember that specifically.
Yeah, because I, because I noted, I took note of that and it took, and that was after the presentation. Now, I just think in terms of whether people are going to apply or not, I mean, people are going to know what that position is for. They're going to know why the name is changed. I think, I know that there is concern about posting it. There's nothing illegal about this. There is nothing illegal about fostering equity and inclusion in a, in a school district, in a community. So I understand the concerns, but I absolutely agree that it was a fight to get that recognition and I, I, this would, this is backing down. I, I, that's my view.
Yeah, I mean, our, the report that we're putting out here, or the, the job offering that we're putting out for Director of Educational Access and Opportunity, it calls out specifically in the advertisement, inclusive education and equitable opportunities. It, it's calling it out. And for reference, we're not employed by the governor and none of our employees in this district are employed by the governor, they're employed by the school district. And we're voted by the taxpayers.
Okay. Board, any more discussion? I have a motion and a second. Okay. Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
No.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Dr. Gitry?
No.
Ms. Parton?
So my vote is no, but my vote is not no because of some of the same reasons that my fellow board members are voting no. I approved and said yes to an executive order and I do not feel comfortable with these changes on that part. So that's why I'm voting no.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
No.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Two in favor, five opposed.
Motion fails. All right. Assuming there's no follow-up motions anybody wants to make, we'll move along. I guess the implications is we keep the charter as is and we'll try to, we'll post the job title as is and go from there. Okay, great. All right, next up, Jennifer Wall, Administrator of Mathematics Curriculum, will present the work of the mathematics textbook adoption committees, along with their recommendations. This is presented as a first read and will be brought back for a vote at the May 20th school board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Get used to using this as a mouse. Do you want the mouse? Would that be easier? Good evening, Chair Hudson, members of the board, and Dr. Bragan. I'm here to share the work of our math textbook adoption committee, which mirrored that of our secondary ELA adoption committee. Our committee started in December with the approval of the school board. Our committees included parents, teachers, and specialists, including ITRTs, instructional coaches, special educators, ESL, and gifted resource teachers. We expected to have a list of materials to work with in December. However, the Virginia Department of Education instead opened a third round of reviews, so we did not receive our list of materials until late February. So at that time, there are about eight to 10 series to consider per grade band. So we held our first meeting in early March and our committees looked at all of the series that were being presented to the Board of Education for approval. We used a rubric to determine finalists with the goal of giving our faculties and communities two to four finalists to look at and review. So at the end of our first meeting, we were able to do that. Find my... And our elementary team came up with two finalists for Kidham, Virginia Math, and Great Minds Eureka. Our middle school identified three finalists, Envision Mathematics, Kidham, Virginia Math, and Math Space, Virginia. And our high school EOC, Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II committees identified four finalists. We had Envision Mathematics, Into Math, Math Space, Virginia, and Reveal Math. So once we had identified our finalists, we shared information with our communities and with our faculties so that they would be able to access these finalists and provide their feedback to us. We asked for principals to share information with families through their school newsletters and emails. We also posted it on our MCPS website and through social media. So those forums were posted and we sought feedback from families, parents, caregivers, and our faculties as well. After that, we scheduled vendor presentations on our March 26th workday. They were virtual meetings that we held and they were open to our textbook adoption committee members and any interested educators. We also recorded those and shared them with faculty so that they could be watched at any convenient time. Our textbook adoption committees then reconvened on April 15th to review all of our stakeholder feedback and discuss the information learned through the vendor presentations and textbook reviews. So we started with our elementary committee. We began our meeting by reviewing the alignment summary that the state of Virginia had provided. We did not have this when we had our first meeting in March, but it was available to us shortly thereafter, so we shared it with community, committee members, and then we reviewed it at our meeting. So the Department of Education committees looked at each of the series and they aligned with our state standards and identified the evidence as being adequate, limited, or no evidence. So we looked at that first. We then looked at the feedback that we had been given by our faculties and communities. So we had 100 teachers who responded, and of those 100 teachers, 91% of the respondents favored Kidham, which received an average rating of 4.3 out of 5. We reviewed all of the comments that they shared, and some of the highlights of those include the alignment with Virginia standards for Kidham, had support for diverse learners, and they found the materials to be student and teacher friendly, as well as rigorous and engaging. We also received comments from 12 parents or caregivers, and they just gave us feedback on the three programs. As we looked through that feedback, they seemed to favor slightly Kidham over Eureka, but there were pros and cons that they identified for each. So once we looked at all of that data and had our discussion, we decided as a committee, they were ready to move forward to make a recommendation. So we did that via Google Form, and you can see that they unanimously selected Kidham to recommend to the board. Some of the rationale included, they looked at the stakeholder feedback, they felt it was very positive for Kidham, there was a strong alignment with the Virginia standards, there was an ease of use, accessibility for all learners, and they found the resources to be engaging. On the same day, we held our secondary committees' meetings as well. And we started the process the same way. We reviewed that information from the Department of Education with the alignment. So you can see the alignment was fairly strong for all three of our finalists in the middle school. And for this, we had 20 teachers who provided feedback to us on our middle school math finalists, which is Math 6 through Math 8. Of those, 80% favored Math Space, which received a rating of 4.55 out of 5. And some of their rationale included the alignment with Virginia standards, and they found it to be an easy interface to navigate, and they liked the fact that there were opportunities for students to show their work and get step-by-step feedback through the program. We also received feedback from three parents or caregivers, and you can read their comments there. They indicated a preference for either Envision or Math Space. Then when we looked at our EOC, or Algebra, Geometry, Algebra II, you can see that it was a closer vote. In that circumstance, we had 47.8% of our 23 teachers who responded favoring Math Space and 43.5% favoring Envision, with about 9% favoring the Reveal Math. So the pros that they identified for Envision included a variety of resources, adaptability of the platform, adaptive practice for students, they found it to be supportive for diverse learners and have interactive lessons. Those that favored Math Space identified pros as the SOL correlation was strong, customizable digital practice, a nice large question bank, and there were helpful videos for families. One thing we also noted was that teachers who teach both middle school math courses and Algebra, Geometry, and Algebra II voted to have the same resources for both. Whether they voted for Envision or Math Space, they did not wish to have a different platform for the middle school and the EOC. We had six caregivers who responded to our survey, and their feedback is here as well. Of those six, we found that the feedback was more positive for Envision and Math Space than the other two finalists, and probably Math Space had a little bit of an edge with three people stating a preference for it and not having any negative feedback. So once again, we checked with the committee to see if they were ready to move forward with the recommendation or if they required additional information. They said they were ready to move forward with a recommendation. So for our middle school math courses, our committee recommended with a vote of 80%, the math, I'm sorry, 91% the Math Space, and the rationale included strong alignment with Virginia standards, student-friendly resources, and the stakeholder feedback they felt supported a choice of Math Space. For the Algebra, Geometry, and Algebra II, 75% of the committee members voted to recommend Math Space, with the rationale including consistency with the middle school program, correlation with our standards, ease for students and teachers, robust and level of practice items, and the step-by-step feedback for students. Those who supported recommending Envision identified its adaptability, resource variety, and support for families as strengths. So the recommendations that are coming forward tonight are for adopting Kidham for grades K through 5 and Math Space for grades 6 through Algebra II. There are also quotes from the vendors included for your information, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for all that, that information. Great presentation. School board, any questions or comments? Who'd like to start?
I'd go ahead.
Sure.
I want to thank you and the committee for all their work. It, it appears that this was a really robust adoption process, so I appreciate the diligence of the committee and our teachers and for, and for community members for providing input. So thank you so much.
Absolutely. Our, our committee did a fantastic job.
Yeah. Ms. Parton?
So thank you. I know this was a lot of time for everyone that was involved, who sent their suggestions, took the survey, took the time to go through it. Math is hard. So, you know, our kids, that is, that is, as we have seen, one of the areas that we, we do struggle with as far as our percentages and wanting to try to get those percentages back up to where they need to be. So I do think that a straight-through curriculum, if it is most beneficial from, leading from the middle school to the high school, would probably be a smoother transition for students. And it looks like there was an overwhelming response that favored the, I believe it was the Math Space. So I think our professionals, who probably know math a whole lot better than I do, know, but, but I can, I am very appreciative for the time and work and especially for our community to take the time in it, because it's hard sometimes. We want to get community feedback and want to get a feel, but it looks like we got some, some good community feedback on this one, so I'm glad to see that we had that collaboration with them. And I think that it looks like everything is in line to move order with Math Space. And then for the Kidham with the K through, the middle, or not the middle, but the kindergarten through 5.
K through 5, yes, thank you.
So is there, I, I did have one thing. So does Kidham, does, does any part of that feed into the Math Space? Is there any correlation or overlap there? Or would there be, or is it basically, because I know it, it's probably not a huge deal if it isn't, because you're going from a, a very basic math to a more advanced math, but I didn't know if there was any correlation and if it was in there, my apologies. But I didn't know if there was any correlation with Kidham and, and the one for the secondary programs.
The only correlation would be that they both addressed the standards well.
Okay.
Math Space is only a 6 through Algebra II program, so there wouldn't be an opportunity to use that in elementary.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Bond?
Well, I give kudos to all those who are blessed with great mathematical skills. That's why I have an accountant. Thank you so much for your hard work and time, and I will leave it up to you guys.
Awesome. Ms. Parton, Ms. Purcell, sorry.
Again, I echo the sentiments of my fellow board members. Thank you for the time and diligence in the, ensuring that this was a really thorough process, and then also just making sure there was so much consensus among the, the committee that just, I think that really helps to set the teachers up for success and, and be prepared over the summer, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yeah, thanks for, for all the work with this. I had an opportunity to go through and do some of the example lessons in the, the different grade levels. I wish that when I was in school, we had computerized math courses that you could get feedback from very quickly. This was, uh, these are great programs, I think they'll serve our children well. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Of course you went in and tried some of the problems. That is unshocking to me. Ms. Franklin?
Okay, I, I'll just say thank you also. Math seems to be less controversial than English.
Not confident.
But I guess it's that defined, is this or is that? So thank you all again and appreciate the hard work.
Thank you.
And I'll just echo the thanks as well. This is a great presentation, clearly a lot of work that went into this and the feedback from the community is outstanding, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Board, any other questions or comments? Okay, great, thank you so much. All right, next up, I'm Helen, I'm Helen Fatinos. Our Administrator of Gifted Programs will present the Gifted Program Annual Report and the 2025- and the 2025 to 2030 Local Plan for the Gifted.
Good evening, Chair Hudson, members of the Board, Dr. Bregan. Thank you for your time this evening. I do have two agenda items for you, so I'll go through one, first half of the presentation. Pause for questions, then go through the second half, if that's okay with you. The first thing I'd like to share with you is the annual report from the Gifted Department, based on the requirements from the 2020-2025 Gifted Plan. I have some information to share with you. The first thing I'd like to share is our report on the screening and selection process for gifted services for this year. There's a lot of information here, so I've tried to break it up into three different slides so that you can actually read it. When I first put it on there, I had to put my glasses on. So we currently have two different, thank you Laura, you can borrow them. We have two different screening periods currently, so I've broken it up into the fall and the spring, and the fall, we generally just look at second grade students. So that's why the numbers are a little bit smaller here. And then Dr. Roundtree asked me to add the standard deviation. Dr. Roundtree, I'll admit that I had to do a little bit of quick learning on that. It's been a minute since I've taken a statistics class, so thank you for that opportunity. I did not include the mean because I was still doing the learning. So if you have questions about the mean, I have them written here, and I can provide them to you later. On this screen is just the total number of students screened and identified throughout this school year, so you can see that number. And then I thought it was important to also share with you just sort of the total number of students identified within Montgomery County Public Schools as of last week. We flagged one hundred and sixty-six students for referral, and you eagle-eyed. Math people will notice that that is slightly larger than the number of students on the previous screen. That is because this number includes students who transferred into Montgomery County that had a gifted identification from their previous school. So we had twelve students that came to us from somewhere else, and they just get flagged in our system as, you know, being referred because we put them through a transfer process. But we had one student that was identified this year with an IEP. And then we have fourteen students receiving ESL services. And then you have a breakdown of the ethnicity of the students identified. The gifted, you know, or the Gifted Plan also asks that I share with you information about the total enrollment of students in secondary classes that are enrolled in honors or AP or DE classes versus just the regular. It is a large spreadsheet, so I didn't try to pull snapshots from that, but I have that linked here for you as well. It also asks that I provide information to you about professional development. This is a part I'm particularly proud of. We do provide annual training to all K to eight teachers, because they are part of our referral and screening process. They fill out something called the HOPE Scales. We also provide targeted professional development to our cluster teachers twice a month. So that is eighty-two elementary school teachers and fifty-one middle school secondary teachers. And then this year, I had the opportunity to provide professional development to any teacher who wanted to participate on our three teacher workdays. So I have here the topics that we covered. And we had a total of eighty people, or eighty, eighty people signed up. So some people came more than once, so it is double counting. But eighty times people came and participated in these. I'm excited to share that it wasn't just your typical teachers. I had a high school Spanish teacher come because she has gifted students in her class, and she felt like she wanted to serve them better. I had a middle school art teacher come because she wanted to serve her teachers better. So I'm excited that there are sort of non-traditional teachers coming to some of our PDs because they want to be able to serve their students as well. And then the other thing I'm proud of, that our staff participated in this year, is some new initiatives in an effort to reach as many students as possible and provide as equal footing and equitable access. Every first grade student, so six hundred and twenty-six students, received two lessons a month in their classrooms from a gifted resource teacher on critical and creative thinking skills. So those are the kind of lessons that they would encounter in the second grade when they go through screening process. So everyone has sort of a level playing field. Everyone's getting to participate in those kind of lessons. We're in the process of surveying those teachers, the first grade teachers now, to find out, did they feel like we were offering challenge to their students? I can tell you anecdotally that the students loved it. I spent a lot of time at Kips in the fall because our GRT there was on maternity leave. And when I would walk into the classroom, the children would be like, "The thinking lady is here." And they would stop everything and be excited about the lesson. So I feel like anecdotally, I can share with you that it went well. We're saving all of their data for next year so that we can kind of compare and contrast, did we find some students in that process that wouldn't have normally come up in our screening process? And my hope is yes. I can also share that the Gifted staff has been invited to present our process at a national conference in the fall because other people see a need for this kind of work, and they are excited to learn from us. So we'll be going to Pittsburgh to the National Gifted Conference in November to share that. I also hosted a family open house, a family game night. And these are some pictures from that. I set up thirty-five chairs, and I thought maybe ten people will come. We had over fifty families, so I had every chair in conference room A and B was taken. And it was shoulder-to-shoulder, wall-to-wall, kids showing their parents how to play games, having fun with their parents. I spent several hundred dollars in snacks, thinking I would have tons of food left over. Not a crumb was left. And we had to sort of shuffle people out the door at eight-thirty because they didn't want to stop playing our games. So any family of all NMCPs was invited. That was put out through Peach Jar, through social media, through principals. So we had a lot of families, not just gifted families, participate in that. And then finally, I instituted something called Family Onboarding. So when our new families were identified as gifted, I had a one-hour Google Meet with those families. And I also recorded it so that families that couldn't come could be informed about what it meant to have a gifted child and also what gifted services would look like for those students. And I had thirty-five families come to that, had a really positive feedback from that. So we'll be doing that again in September for all families to come and to get some learning on what it means to be a parent to a gifted child. And just a reminder that these are the items shared by Mrs. McGee in December from the, the local plan and the requirements that the Gifted Advisory Committee is asked to share. So I'll pause there. That's the end of Agenda Item One, and entertain any questions that you have.
Okay, thanks for that presentation.
Yeah.
School Board, any questions? Questions or comments? Before we move on.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. And the additions of the percentages for the various schools. So there's definitely some, some wide percentages of students in the, the different schools that are identified as gifted and that are in the Gifted Programs. Are there, are those students generally identified by parents or by teachers? What's, what's the method of identification that's most prevalent?
The, most of our students come up from our screening process, so that's sort of twofold. One, every classroom teacher fills out something called the HOPE Scales. That's an eleven-point scale that they rate each child on, from one to five, on different sort of social and academic generalizations about gifted students. And then we norm that data to that building. So we're trying very hard to, to compare community to community. That's not a nationally-normed scale. We also use MAP. So everyone first through eighth grade takes MAP. That is nationally-normed, and that's an achievement data point. So we use MAP scores, we use the HOPE Scales. And then every second grade student does something called a planned, planned experiences with a gifted resource teacher. So those are intentionally created activities that should elicit gifted sort of thinking and gifted behavior, and those are scored by a committee. So many data points. We also collect the VOWS scores and any kind of other SOL scores, any school-based data. All of that gets put on a big spreadsheet. And I go to each school and meet with the GRT and the school principal, and we talk through every kid that shows up on that spreadsheet. So really, anyone who's in the top ten percent on any one of those tiny pieces gets put on the spreadsheet. And we speak about each individual student and say, "Does this child potentially require gifted services to be successful?" Now, if a parent refers a child, they automatically get on the spreadsheet as well. I did look up today, we only had thirteen parent referrals since last July. Ten of those, I'm sorry, sixteen parent referrals. Thirteen were from the Blackstone community, three were from the Christiansburg community. From those sixteen referrals, four students were identified. But when I looked at their data from that initial identification process, those four students would have shown up on our spreadsheet regardless of that parent referral or not. So we do not get a lot of parent referrals. Every teacher gets to refer their children because they fill out that HOPE Scale every year. From that school-based meeting, we then determine which students we think need further assessment. Because again, we never want to take one data point. We send letters home requesting the permission for a parent to, from their parent or guardian, to give them an additional assessment. Because again, I don't ever want to give a child an assessment the parent isn't behind. If they say yes, then we give them an ability assessment. So MAP is achievement-based, what do you know? Then we give them an ability assessment, how does your brain work? So I'm not a psychiatrist or psychologist, I can't give an IQ test, but I can give something commensurate to that. Then we take all of those students, each kid gets a file. It's by this point, half an inch thick with all that data. And we go to a county-based, district-based meeting where we have four different school-based principals, plus all the GRTs, and we sit and look at each file, kid by kid. We talk about each kid, and we kind of say, is there more data here that's saying yes? Or more data that's saying no? Or do we want more information? And sometimes the committee will say, "There's a lot on each side. Can we get one more assessment?" So we really take it very seriously because giving a child a gifted label or not giving a child a gifted label can profoundly impact their future academic success, right? We don't ever want to put a label on a kid that's going to harm them, but we don't want to prevent them from getting something. So that meeting takes all day to talk about those students. Then another letter goes home to the parents saying, "Your child has been found eligible for gifted services. Do you give us permission to serve your child?"
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, and so the, this, this year and next year, it'd be interesting to see the, the first grade discovery program.
Yeah.
I wasn't, when reviewing it, I didn't, it didn't click that, uh, there with the push-in model, if there are any non-identifying things that you don't have gifted experts in, then it'd be interesting to see if those percentages come out to, to be closer across the board within some, some statistical significance.
I'm very hopeful it will. I'm hopeful it'll capture our students who maybe show giftedness in a non-traditional way.
And then lastly, are there recommendations for parents that have children with learning disabilities and how to identify twice giftedness on them with the, in other subjects that are not their learning disabilities?
Yeah, so I did, I mentioned it briefly at our open house. We have a, a parent resource, guardian resource collection, where I do have quite a few, like, professional resources that I lend out to families. And I actually am working with Julie Ligon to try to come up with a way to, one, better educate our families, and then, two, better serve our students. So all of those are sort of things that are, I'm continuing to work on.
Thank you.
You bet.
Ms. Franklin?
I appreciate your work and trying to be as inclusive as we can. It would be good information to have our gifted students broken down by our student groups so we could see, well, not just for this year, but.
Oh, overall, okay.
Overall, right. And.
I brought a pen to write down things to gift you.
And the, um, open house, I'm glad there were so many people who showed up, and you had to scramble. So transportation is always a concern for me when we have folks who just wouldn't be able to make, attend a wonderful open house like this. So have we thought about maybe doing them in the different communities? So there's easier access, and maybe we would get some more interest from parents.
Yeah, that's a really great idea. I did have one parent reach out to me and, and name that transportation was a struggle for her, and she wanted more information. So later that week, I, she didn't get to come play the games. But I did go to her and sit down and have a conversation with her. Like I said, I just didn't know who would show up. And so I'd much rather add places at the table than have an empty table. But it's certainly something I want to continue to do. And I think moving forward, it is clear that there is a, a demand for it. So maybe having one per nine weeks in each of our communities would be how we move forward next year.
Again, thank you for, you know, trying to do.
Yes, ma'am.
To reach everyone we can.
Dr. Gutrie?
Thank you, thank you. I, I appreciate some of the, the changes that you've made in the department. I know with the professional development, we talked about, I think that's wonderful. I saw that VDEOE complimented the division on that, but also the K two, the early, your efforts there. And that's a change, because before it was like, oh, no, let's wait till second grade and third. So I know that that has, that's a cultural change in the division, so I'm happy to see that. I do have a few questions, but they're more about the plan and moving forward, so I'll wait for that part of the presentation.
You bet.
Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Pardon?
So I basically echo everything everybody said, and you have put a ton of work into this. And I know you've been working on it really hard, and I really appreciate that. And especially trying to, to get as many students as we can. And not only because I don't want any to be overlooked, but, you know, I've, I've had, we've seen and heard students that sometimes I feel like maybe sometimes we have them in front of us, maybe because they're having issues or troubles at school because of educational reasons and maybe not so much some things. So, you know, that might be some things we can think about looking at too. And I do appreciate, actually, Dr. Roundtree hit on something that I had actually thought about. And that was, if students show a higher rate of educational reasoning in one subject, but maybe not another, to fully encompass them as a, as a gifted child. So it sounds like you all have a, have a plan for that, because they may not be a one-size-fits-all in that term, but maybe they do excel in certain other areas that we could see about making sure they're put in the proper place for those.
Absolutely. So we do have twice-exceptional students in our program. I can think of two that are in fifth grade right now that have an exceptionality in one area and a, and a labeled disability in another. And myself and the GRT at the elementary level are working really hard with their middle school principals and making sure that those students are placed thoughtfully so that they are seen for their positive strengths and then supported for the areas that they need. So that is definitely at the forefront of our mind. It, it does present a challenge when identifying, because sometimes, you know, in the wash, it looks kind of average, right? And so that's why we try so hard to have so many different types of assessments, to really pull out those areas where they might actually be gifted. We also, if a parent, I've, I've had the special ed staff come to me and say, like, "In special ed testing, this child shows a deficit in Area A, but look at their, their testing in Area B." We can use that information, we don't have to retest them. And that, we, so more than once, we have used, you know, a child's qualifications for an IEP to also label them gifted. It's a small percentage of our students, it's not, you know, very prevalent.
I do like the fact that you're thinking outside of the box on that, though.
Yeah.
So I'm really, I'm really happy to see that, because, you know, I have always kind of felt like before, it's like, okay, you have to be like an excellent student all the way around to even get considered. So to hear that you all are thinking about trying to distinguish students on those type of capabilities is really promising. And I did have one more thing that you kind of touched on. So what if we don't find out till down the line that we have a gifted student that we didn't identify? How do you go about fixing that?
So we look at every student K to eight. So I have students that have qualified in first grade, at the end of kindergarten. That is very rare. But students that qualify in first and second grade, but we continue screening them all the way through eighth grade. And so we have students on here, you can see, it's not a lot. But you can see, we did look at two students at CMS and thirteen students at Blackstone Middle School, and we identified all of those students. So it, gone are the days, I don't know, when I was in elementary school, we all took one test in second grade, and then the top fifteen kids got to go to the Gifted Program forever and ever amen, and no one else was invited. That is not appropriate.
And you hit the nail on the head with that, because I was going to say, sometimes I have heard some teachers say, "They're excelling this year, but then later on, they might not be up to where they would be considered for that." Or maybe they didn't hit that this year, but two years later, they, they have hit it.
I, when I was working at Margaret Beeks, I can think of one very specific student. I could just see it in her eyes. And I tested her in first grade, I tested her in second grade. I finally got her in fourth grade. Like, something in her brain finally clicked, but I was like, "I'm not giving up on you, because I can see it, you're just not showing me in that way." You're just not showing me in that one data piece. Um, but I would also say to teachers too, you know, every kid deserves to make growth every year, every kid deserves to go to school and learn something new every day. Um, and I'm actually really excited that the VDOE is now saying that growth for all students is one of our measures, because sometimes people say, well, they're gifted, they'll be fine, and we put them over there. Or they're already scoring in the nine-ninth percentile, they don't, they don't need to make more growth, but they do.
But they do, and you're exactly right. So, and we have to challenge those students as well as our other students, so. Um, and that's kind of what I was trying to say with the ones that you hear. Um, well, maybe they're not making good grades because they're bored, or I just don't enjoy that class. Well, why don't you? And, and that might be part of the reason, so. I'm glad you're recognizing that, and you are, um, you're helping others recognize that, so. I'm excited for this program, so thanks so much.
Appreciate that.
Ms. Pardon?
Well, and not only was it the test in the second grade, um, I, I do also believe that you had some teachers that bought into the program more than others. And the ones that truly thought that it was an enriching program tended to search out and find those students to do that. But a lot of them had a higher level of what gifted should be. So it looks like with this, it's a little more leveled out, and I appreciate that, because it's, um, I, I feel like by the time our students get to middle school and high school, they take the advanced courses that they feel like they need to be at that level, and so it kind of all works out. So it's more elementary education, getting that extra, and it also used to be that it was just more work. You know, a lot of, a lot of students didn't want to do it, because it was just extra work. So now they're finding, okay, is this not the answer to that? Someone who's just, um, gets things a little quicker, has a better memorization skill. It's not all about being, you know, a certain, I'm not even looking for the word that I'm trying to find, but anyway, thank you.
Yeah, true giftedness is a neurodiversity, just like any other learning disability. So it's, it's kids thinking and behaving differently, it's not just getting A's. So we're working hard to make sure teachers understand that.
Thank you.
Ms. Purcell?
Uh, thank you so much, Mrs. Potinos, for all of your hard work. Uh, I think most of the questions that I had, uh, were already addressed by my, my fellow board members. I appreciate your, um, ongoing efforts just to make sure that the identification of gifted students is just a little more equally distributed, because this is, when I'm looking at this chart, and it's very much, um, skewed by community, and we know that those were not more gifted, um, at KIPs than Eastern Montgomery. It's just a, a matter of, uh, of identification. And hopefully other educators will find the value in the professional development and just, um, finding new ways to engage their students and get them, get them excited and get them thinking. And I'm looking forward to seeing more of your thinking nights. Events are really hard to plan, and it's super hard to get people to come out, so that's pretty amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now to echo the, the thanks and appreciation. A congrats on your, on the national recognition of your program too, that's outstanding, so. Um, yeah, I don't have any questions either, everything's already been answered. Board, any other questions or comments on the report before we move to the plan?
So where are you going to be showing the hard work?
At what conference?
Yes.
Um, at Pittsburgh, at the National Association for the Gifted Child.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, round two. Um, so for our next agenda item, I would like to share with you the proposed 2025-2030 local plan for the gifted. On the VDOE requires that we, every school district have a local plan for the gifted. The look, or the VDOE also requires that we have something called a technical review every five years. Um, and so MCPS aligns our updates to our plans with that technical review. Um, it just makes sense if they're going to give us feedback, then that's a time to make a change. Um, so, I have provided with you many links, so bear with me, um, as we talk through the timeline. So last fall, um, the Gift Advisory Committee and the MCPS gifted staff reviewed the 2020-2025 plan, um, and identified areas of growth or any sort of necessary updates that we wanted to make. And we created, um, the draft of the next plan, a red line draft. So that is, um, this one that is long, but it has, anything that we changed, um, was struck through, and then anything we added was in red. Um, it is difficult to read. So I also provided you with a clean draft, um, and that is the draft that we sent to the VDOE for technical review. Um, and we sent that to them in December, um, and in January, we received their feedback. Um, I incorporated a few of the suggestions, and then here, this last link is the one I'm asking you to consider for, um, for our next gifted plan. Um, the feedback from the GAC and the GRTs was that we, they would ask that I improve the user experience, so add a table of contents, simplify and clarify some language. Um, we wanted to update some of our documents to better suit the needs of the parents and teachers. Um, they asked that we put into our goals to consider coming up with a, um, general intellectual ability identification, streamline the referral process, strengthen our secondary services, um, add some clarity to the transfer student eligibility process and the reevaluation process, increase school-wide enrichment, um, move to an annual referral window. So currently, we have a twice-a-year referral window to move to once a year to streamline that process, and then also clarify the appeals process. We asked ourselves, you know, what are our priorities as a department and a district, and how does our plan reflect those? And those were sort of our, our answers, um, with our goal always to be to match students to appropriate services while continuing to nurture talent. Um, the feedback from the VDOE was overwhelmingly positive, um, and I was very pleased to hear that. In part two, they, um, commended us for our K to two push-in model, so that's our new discovery program. Um, they commended us for our, our professional development. They also suggested that we make our nomination form more available to families. Um, and then also just said we did a great job with professional development. Um, so I'm going to go through our suggested updates to the plan. If you want to follow along, I have linked, again, the red line draft or the clean draft here on this slide. Um, and I'm just going to go through each section of the plan, if that's okay with you, and, and explain what it was that I'm suggesting we update, um, just so you understand our reasoning from that, if that's, works for you. Um, so in part one and two, um, the first thing I did was just add a table of contents, because usually this document is navigated online. Table of contents that are linked to each section just makes it a lot easier for users to, um, interface with. Um, I just aligned some of our language with MCPS, um, with the, in the beginning, it, it refers to our strategic plan, and the language was just out of sync, so I made sure that it was synced up with our current strategic plan. Um, and then I updated our goal statements, that's something that we update every, um, year. You know, we've already achieved some of those projects, so we want to move forward. Some of them we haven't achieved, so I left those in there. In part three, the screening, um, referral and identification section. Um, and again, for those of you who don't know, this template is provided by the VDOE, the names are provided by the VDOE. Like, we are, we are asked to put our information into their template. Um, again, I added clarity in the language. I feel like less is more sometimes, like, I felt like some of the language was just a little bit confusing. Um, and then the biggest thing that the GRTs and the GAC suggested was to move to a once-a-year evaluation window, so currently, um, we look at second graders in the fall, and we look at everyone else in the spring. The GRTs feel like that takes a lot of their service time. Um, it also kind of creates a disruption in their groups, because, you know, they have current second graders already in their class, and then we add more second graders in January, and it, it it provides sort of a disconnect for those students. Um, and it also, we sort of asked ourselves, is it fair to only look at one group in the fall and say to all those other people, we can't look at you during this time, we only look at second graders, and we look at everyone else in the spring? So, trying to streamline that process to make sure that the GRTs are spending quality time in the identification process, but also spending as much time as possible supporting students and teachers, um, with their services. And then also making sure that we're clear on who's eligible for evaluation. Um, there was a list of assessments, including things like PALS, so updating that language to, you know, current assessments in that area. Um, and then the other thing that I think is going to be a big change is, is changing some of our paperwork. Previously, we wrote something called the Differentiated Service Plan, the DSP. I mean, that's sort of a, a promise for what students are going to receive. The GAC felt like it was difficult for parents to understand, teachers felt like it wasn't very user-friendly. And so, um, I've sort of reimagined that document and changed the name of it, partly to clarify, but partly to maybe remove some of that prejudice, um, of the former, former document of people being like, well, it just doesn't work for me. Um, so we're going to call it the Learning Support Plan. I feel like that's a little bit clearer on like what it is, how are we supporting our students? Um, and it's going to be laid out a little bit differently. And the GAC asks that we sort of provide like a, a guide for it on the website, because teachers love to use acronyms, and teachers love to use teacher talk. And, um, the parents were like, we don't really know what that means, and I was like, great, that is a wonderful place where I can clarify. So there will be a place for parents to go and sort of see the document online on our website, but also understand what it means to provide, um, you know, advanced reading passages, or to be differentiated, uh, in this way, um, in a content, content product or process. Um, the other change that we decided possibly was best was to just write that once for students in elementary. And then again, once for students in middle school. Um, the document doesn't change a lot, and it, it takes a lot of time for teachers to write it. And so if we write one really great document that encompasses that, um, and then that document follows that student through the elementary time, and then through the middle school time, we felt like that was a better use of GRT resources and help parents to better understand. Um, our plan is to, again, have that parent onboarding, so in-person or online, we would provide that document to the parents and really spend some time walking through it, so that they really understand what their services are going to be for their student. Um, in parts four and five, we clarified some language on how parents are notified, um, for the appeals process. I found that there wasn't really a designated appeals process, and that's not okay. So, we clarified that and made sure that everyone understands, if you would like to appeal a decision from the gifted, um, process, then here are exactly the steps that are going to happen, and we, and we wrote that into the plan. Um, also, there was not a lot of clarity on if a parent had outside testing done, what were the assessments that we would be able to accept? And so we, you know, we codified that. And then finally, um, if a parent wants to, to ask for a change in services for their student, um, we clarified that language, so that parents really understood, if we want to suspend services, or we want to remove services for our student, here's exactly the process that happens. In part six, seven, and eight, um, again, it, it calls back to that Learning Support Plan, and then, um, how are we going to communicate with parents? There was a long list of, of books that, um, we use now that we have access, easy access to the internet. Um, the, that catalog will just be kept and updated on our website instead. Um, that way, we can make sure we're, we're having the most up-to-date titles and not having to rewrite and bring the plan back to you every year when we add more titles to our collection. Um, we updated language for differentiation, and I felt like it was important to separate that for elementary and secondary services, because it, it does look different at those levels, so making sure we're clear on what's happening at the elementary level versus the secondary. And then, um, remove some outdated MCPS policies that are no longer in effect. And then finally, um, in the last section, just updating languages to reflect new document titles. So, that was a lot of information. What questions can I answer for you?
Thank you for walking us through that, that, that really helps us understand the changes in the plan.
Yes.
Board, do you have questions? Who'd like to start? Dr. Gutierrez, you alluded to have some, some questions earlier, so.
Okay, thanks. So, the first thing is about the referral, and I did notice that, that, that shorter window. So, I understand for the, the screening, let me just get some clarification first. The recommendation to move to the one is, and you, you mentioned the screening at the second grade in the fall? And, so that is like the wholesale screening at grade level?
So, in the past,
Yeah.
all second graders were screened, and the second grade teachers only filled out that HOPE scale in the fall.
Yeah.
Everyone else, K one, three through eight, does it in January, February.
Okay.
So, one thought is, um, the second grade teachers have to fill out that HOPE scale right at the beginning of September, so they've maybe known their students for three weeks. It's really difficult to fill out a, a comprehensive scale on a student when you don't have a lot of information about them already. And then GRTs have to quickly get into classrooms and do those planned experiences. And then we only have one MAP score for those students, because they've only taken one round of MAP. So by moving, so every other student, K one, three through eight, their teachers get four months to get to know them. We have more time to do planned experiences, we get two rounds of MAP. Um, so they are really getting a better look, if that makes sense, if we move to that sort of spring one, and by spring, I mean like February. Um, so, our suggestion would be, let's just look at everybody at once. So GRTs are maximizing their classroom time by not doing a bunch of screening in the fall, and then coming back and doing it again in the winter, spring. Um, but also making sure we're getting the highest quality of information from each student. Um, you know, the fall MAP, that first round of MAP, a lot of the questions refer back to last year's work. When you go to winter, that MAP test is based more on that grade level, so I think we're getting better data as well.
Okay, that, that makes sense. I, as you know, I mean, the, the screening versus referral, they're, they're not synonymous, they mean, you, referral is part of screening, but someone can make, say, a direct referral.
Yes, so, parents can fill out that form on our website and directly refer their students.
But only during that window.
That is what I am proposing, because that's when we would be doing our testing.
Yeah.
So, my thought is on, you know how at the end of a Google form, you can make sort of a message? So I will leave the, that form open twelve months a year, but I will be clear to the parents, thank you for your referral. Your child will be looked at in February of that school year. So if they refer their student in June, yes, it's going to be a minute. Um, but, even if they refer their child in June, and they weren't a second grader, they're still not going to get looked at again until January, February.
Right, so I know that different divisions have different approaches to this, some, it is ongoing, some have a couple of different windows, this is a short window. I'm thinking, uh, we have a, a community in which there are people moving in and out all the time,
Yeah.
with University Town. So, you could have a, a family move here, they have a student who's really bright, wasn't identified in their former school, but they, but they wanted to refer that student. That student would have to wait a year essentially to go through that whole process, get identified before, becau-, I mean, sometime late in the spring. So they could go through that whole year, so what, most of that year.
Sure, but that's already happening. So if a student moves here that's not in second grade,
Yeah.
if they're in K one, three through eight, and they move here in August,
Yep.
they're still not going to get looked at until spring.
Right, but, so, I'm, I'm pressing this, because the, once, basically referrals made, you have how many days to evaluate?
The way is our work is that that parent is referring their student for additional screening. We do not ever let a parent say, you have to test my kid, because then all we would be doing is testing children.
Right, but the referral, though, can be, is
This does not follow the same rules as an IEP.
No, 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 so I understand that. Um, so I would encourage you to still have two windows, I understand separating and having a screening process, but I would, you know, I'm just thinking about students who do come in. If they have to wait most of a year, then they're not getting differentiated instruction that whole period, whereas other divisions do have it on an ongoing basis, not only the screening, but also the referral. So I would encourage you
So I, can I clarify for you, because I think maybe you are not understanding our language? So, every kid gets screened
Right.
every year.
Right, right.
Then, that goes to a school-based screening meeting,
Right.
where then we refer them for testing.
Right.
So referral, only second graders get referred in the fall. Any other grade level gets referred, if we're going to refer them to testing in the spring. So no matter when you move in, unless you're in second grade,
Right.
then you would still be waiting until spring.
Right, but the, so, I do understand the difference in language, so the referral, though, parents can make a referral. And that does not, parents do, do not have to wait for the screening process for that referral, they can make a direct referral, according to the code.
Then, we still, they, that referral sits until our screening period.
But that's not how the, the code of Virginia, how the administrative code, once that referral is made, there's a window that's, that, there's a window of time in which there needs to be the assessment. We can talk about that offline.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, one of the things we've talked about, the middle school. So what's changed in this plan to address, um, that's a weak, that's a weak spot.
It is.
And when I looked at the plan, I didn't really see much of difference in there, because what, what I've seen is that, um, just um, just using the enrichment time and clustering them is just not enough. I mean, video, I mean, they talk about accelerated instruction and I know people have talked, like, really have pushed. So what is in this plan that kind of shores up the middle school level?
I'm not sure it's necessarily in the plan, but it is in the work that we're doing to be compliant with what is already in the plan. So, we are using data to place every sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth grader in an honors English class now. So, that doesn't mean that you have to be gifted to be placed in honors six through nine English. But we are using very specific and a big chunk of data. Not, again, I never would use one data point to make a decision for a child because one test one day is not appropriate. But what I'm also doing is working with the gifted staff, with the coaches and with those teachers to write a syllabus that overlays the requirements
Yeah.
for that sixth grade. And that syllabus, I actually was just working with GRTs on this yesterday. That syllabus includes advanced grammar, advanced vocabulary, advanced, um, writing, and then advanced novel studies.
Yeah.
So, um, I'm very excited that you have approved the ELA curriculum 'cause that means now I can dig into that and find what resources, resources are there and that what resources we need to provide to those teachers. So I've been working all year long, um, with the honors nine teachers and their coaches to make sure that this is something they want. Um, and then it's really teacher-led. I don't want anyone to ever say, well, Helen came in and said, I have to teach this, so I guess we're doing grammar now. No. I want them to lead the work, but, um, I've been trying to give them very specific professional learning on what does advanced rigorous curriculum look like? Cause it's not just next year's books.
Right.
Right? Like it's not, um, Eat Your Shredded Wheat, right? Like we want it to be something that's engaging to students, but also really meaningful to students. So, thinking like a practitioner, acting, writing like a practitioner, what is that expert really doing? Um, and so I'm also exploring, there's a really wonderful professor out of Tennessee who's specifically an expert on advanced secondary curriculum. And so I've been working with her to see about bringing her in to give some like targeted professional development to our middle school and high school teachers. So that it's not just harder work or not just more work like Jamie said, but it's actually like meaningful work.
I appreciate that. I would, I would really like to see in the plan
Okay.
those efforts to shore up the middle school level.
Okay.
Um, to make that concrete, cause this is gonna be the plan for the next five years for the whole program. And the, and the final thing, and I'll just say this really quickly, one of the things I did look for is, um, how we're addressing the twice exceptional. And I didn't see any language with that. Cause I, I have talked to, I know anecdotally, there are people who have 504s and have struggled to, to get the, through identification. That's just anecdotal, but when I looked at this plan, I was like, is there anything to address? Cause we have a, a number of kids who have 504s who have ADHD and have these, they're really bright. And so I would love to see that addressed in a plan.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Go around, um, Ms. Pardon?
I'm good. Thank you. And thank you again for all of your hard work. I appreciate your insight and what's going to be coming up and looking towards the future. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bond?
Thank you. I'm good.
Thank you.
Ms. Prusell?
Um, I'm drawing from memory right now, so I, I apologize if I'm off kilter. I thought that there were advanced science classes at the middle school level as well.
Yes.
So how is that maybe being integrated into?
Advanced, so, advanced math and advanced science are advanced because of the actual VOE course and like the timing of it. So, um, that's what makes it advan- like they literally are advanced a year. Um, and so I'm not touching that. Honors English, there's nothing that's saying in our work right now, like this is what's different between honors and on-level. Um, and so that's where I'm really focusing work right now because everybody has to take English. Um, you can either choose one or the other, or you can't, the data will put you in one or the other. Um, we do have an appeals process. So if a family feels that their child was placed in English six and should be in English honors six, we have a process for that. Um, we also have a process for if students come to us over the summer from somewhere else, um, making sure that we know how to place them appropriately because they won't have that wealth of data before. But, um, English is where I feel like we, I can focus most of my work. One, because we identify students in English and in math. Um, that does not mean you cannot be gifted in science, but currently our plan says identify in those two areas only. Um, but the rigor of the coursework for math and science is what provides that extra. In English, I'm trying to make sure that rigor is then also sort of codified into the, to the course.
Excellent. Thank you so much and just thanks for all of your detail-oriented work and, and updating this plan.
Thank you.
Dr. Renfri?
Yeah, thanks for the work. Uh, and just to get an idea, what, what does the pullout in middle school for the enrichment period look like?
That is one thing that I, again, am working on to make sure it is a little more consistent. Um, students come to their gifted resource teacher at Blacksburg Middle School once a week. And then at the other times of their Bruin time, they either have their SEL curriculum they're doing, they have an outside day. Or the GRT provides some activities for that teacher to, um, do in her, his or her Bruin time. Um, but when they come to us, we do a lot of similar curriculum that happens at elementary school. We use Think Law, which is a, um, a curriculum where students are asked to think critically and then learn how to disagree without being disagreeable. Um, we also have some engineering units. So we have one, um, on helmet safety and then we've taken students to the helmet lab. Um, there's one on drones and we've taken the kids to the drone cage. So we try to connect them to some field trips. Um, as a side note, we did take all the eighth graders to the governor's school on a really fun field trip. I don't know if you saw the pictures from that, but they loved it. Um, so, every school is different because of the levels of service. So Blacksburg Middle School, I have 1.6 GRTs serving there, but I also have a lot more students. Christiansburg Middle School, um, they use that GRT. The principals choose to use that GRT as an assigned teacher to their advisory time. So the first nine weeks, she pulled the sixth graders. The second nine weeks, she pulled the seventh graders. The, um, third nine weeks, she pulled the eighth graders and they did nine weeks of curriculum. And then this nine weeks, she's been kind of creating lessons, um, on executive functioning, higher level puzzles. And then she kind of sends that out to students and then she's allowing students to sort of self-select if they wanna come during their time. And she welcomes any student. She also, she really welcomes any student who's asking for a challenge, whether they're identified or not. Um, at Auburn Middle School, that, that teacher's only there twice a week. So she pulls them during their Eagle time, um, and does those same activities, same at Shawzle Middle School. So, um, it varies, but it varies because of staffing.
Yeah. I look forward to the, the advancements in the coming years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Franklin?
I didn't think I had anything until he asked the question. Oh, not really. So you mentioned that all the eighth graders went to the governor's school?
All our fifth graders and our eighth graders went, yeah.
I'm good then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't have any questions myself. Again, thank you for the presentation. So since this is a first read, I wanna be clear in terms of, of the guidance that, that we're, we're offering to you. So, I took notes based on what I think I heard feedback. So, I think it all came from Dr. Gettrich. So the, the, the review of that screening timeline to make sure it's compliant with state code and, and potentially looking at keeping the two periods. Um, uh, more of a focus in middle school as well. And then, um, s- some more specific language around the twice students.
Okay. So if I add those and get that to you next week, then you, you then would vote on it the next, next week? Or do you want me to come back, present that to you in two weeks, and then we'll do a third read?
Yeah. So, I guess first off, I wanna, wanna get a consensus from the board about those, those changes that were proposed. To make sure we're all comfortable with, with asking you to pursue those.
Okay.
But if you have a consensus, then incorporate those into what you have, bring those back for the final review and, and we can vote on that at the next meeting.
Okay.
So, thumbs up if we're, we're comfortable with those recommendations. Okay. Great.
Great. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Appreciate your time.
Any other questions or comments, Board?
Can I just ask one other question? I know it's late. This is, this is just, this is a five-year plan. Are there any plans, cause I know we're adding some staffing, um, again in the budget, to expand beyond just the two, uh, areas of identification? I ask that 'cause we're about to embark on a new governor's school and we don't identify in the social sciences. I know it's in humanities. Is that?
So one of the goals that's written in here is to explore a GIA, General Intellectual Ability Identification. So yes, that is written into our goals.
Okay.
Um, so the way the goals work is that each year, the GRTs and the GAC agree on which goals we wanna focus on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I, we could focus on that next year, bring information to you, propose another plan change. Like, we don't have to wait five years to write a new plan. So we could sort of update the plan in two years and change that if that is your will.
Okay, great. Cause I, if, if this is gonna go forward, I would, I would love to see the gifted program move in concert with that to prepare our students for that.
Hundred percent agree.
For those options.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Great, Board. Anything else?
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you so much for all that. That was a lot. All right, next up, um, Angie Bland, our Director of Finance, and Trevor Bennett, the Budget and Finance Manager, will present an update on the 2024-25 MCPS state bonus proposal.
Good evening. Mr. Bennett and I are here this evening to present an update on the state-provided employee bonus. As we discussed at the last meeting, on March the sixth, the governor amended the budget to include a one-time $1,000 bonus for all state-funded SOQ positions. And the purpose of this bonus was to provide retention among school instructional and support positions. When we finalized this presentation and uploaded it on May first, that had not yet been signed, um, and approved by the governor. On May the second, we got the approval and the signature on that. Based on the timing of the approval and with the short turnaround for school districts to be able to provide that bonus, um, as the required date was June first, the state has provided some additional guidance. Um, so now the state will still work to provide the funding to the schools by June first, if at all possible. They're currently working on that. Um, however, the school districts have flexibility now in when we actually provide that, that employee bonus. Um, June first is no longer the requirement. So the school districts have the ability to carry over the funding. The funding will still come in for this current fiscal year, but we would have the opportunity to carry over that funding into the next fiscal year and provide the bonus after school has begun and, um, all employees have returned, um, contracted employees. And it's, of course, the boards will and how, you know, when you want to provide that bonus. Um, but it would allow for us, if we move it into the next fiscal year, to actually look at the, the actual retention for those returning contracted employees. The eligibility, eligibility dates obviously would have to be modified. If we moved the date for the bonus, um, I believe we had the, um, March to May dates as eligibility, but we would have to take a look at that if we move it further, if we look at August or September, um, for a payment date. The bonus has not changed. It's still the $1,000 bonus and the, all employees would receive $646 after taxes. And that is pretty much the update. Um, we'll open it up if you have any questions.
Okay, thanks. I guess I just wanna be clear in terms of what, what's being proposed 'cause last time this was combined with a request to potentially augment the S, the SOQ and all that kinda stuff. So this is all, all still that. We just have more flexibility with the timeline. Is that, is that really the change?
That, that is correct. We will still provide, um, we'll still receive the same funding. Um, it's, it's just over a million dollars for the SOQ, um, funded positions. And then, um, in order to provide that bonus for all employees, um, th- there would be additional funding that would be required. Um, when we discussed it last time, I mean, we mentioned that there is the possibility with some SR revenues that are, that are sitting, um, in, um, the, the revenues for this current year that could be appropriated for, for that purpose.
Okay, thanks. School Board, any, any questions or?
Yeah, I have a question. So, uh, I don't understand the budgetary impact. So, we're gonna have, we're providing bonuses for the non-SOQ positions, correct? Am I?
If, if, if that's the boards' will to do that, yes.
Um, so, if it's done this, what's the impact on our budget if we do it this fiscal year versus waiting until the next fiscal year?
Su- so, e- either way, we, we would need to do an appropriation. Um, so, the, the funds aren't currently sitting in our, in our operating, operating budget for that. So when the state actually supplies this funding, it will go into the revenue account, which is held by Montgomery County. So, if it was to be given sometime in June, we would need at our next meeting to do a supplemental appropriation request to be approved first by the school board. And then it would need to go to the Board of Supervisors as well for approval. If, if approved by both boards, then it is moved into our current operating budget to allow us to provide the funding for that.
I see. And would that be the case for the next fiscal year as well?
That is correct.
Okay, so it doesn't really matter 'cause it's gonna be an additional appropriation, whether it happens this fiscal year or next fiscal year?
If, um, the decision is to move that into the next fiscal year, the funding will still be put in approximately June first or so this year. And then at the end of the year, in July, we always come forward and we have the appropriation quest. Any, any, um, additional revenues, unanticipated revenues are moved over then and determined if they go into the operating budget or into health reserves and that. So that would just be on that list to be moved over into the operating budget.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's really helpful.
Okay, great. Thanks. Any more?
So thank you guys. Um, I do like the budgetary aspect of waiting. Um, it just makes more sense to me, even though I know the money's gonna be the same. It just makes more sense to me on our side with, with the budget issues that we deal with. And if it is truly for retention, then I would like to wait to make sure we are retaining, um, for the bonus. But that's just my feelings on it. So, thank you guys so much for all your work.
Ms. Bond? Ms. Prusell?
So are we trying to determine when, when we want to provide this or if we want to match the SOQ?
I mean, I guess it's-
I don't know if I should be asking you or Ms. Land or-
The administration is asking.
I think the goal was to update, um, the changes from the state in that you can pay it out in September, which the goal of it was a retention bonus. So those people that would still be employed in the division will be here in September. Thank you for staying with us. Here's $646, a thousand minus taxes. That's what I think you wanted to say tonight.
That's correct. Yes.
And when, when do we kind of know? Have a rough estimate of, you know, people have signed their contracts and that kind of thing and it's the right time to say, thanks. Here you go.
Um, human resources could help us more with that. Um, as soon as we have an approved budget, um, which I think we're looking at doing that with the next meeting, um, then contracts can begin. And so, you know, in, in the period of, it should be in June, um, a, a period of time, they would be able to have a pretty good idea. Of course, we're hiring up until, um, you know, the start of school in some cases. Um, but we should have the majority of those in place, um, you know, um, prior to the, to the start of the next fiscal year.
Thank you. And I know at our, at your last presentation, um, there had been discussion about, if like part-time positions could be, be included. Um, is there any additional information for us about what that cost differential would be?
Sure. Um, I, I have, we, we have some numbers we, and we'd be happy to share it, you know, by email that, um, is, is easier, um, to, to look at. Um, we took a look at substitutes, um, and we looked at substitutes at a hundred, who have worked 100 days or more, 75 to 99 days and then 50 to 74 days. Um, those who have worked 100 days or more, there's 29. Um, 75 to 99 days are 26 and 50 to 74 days this year are 44. Obviously, that changes each year, but this is our, our current year, um, that we're looking at. And that was about two weeks ago, that, that data. Um, we have 14 substitute custodians. We have 139 coaches. We have 21 before and after-school aides. We have seven student custodians. We have homebound teachers, a total of three. We have 14 all-in tutors. we have homebound teachers, a total of three, we have 14 all-in tutors, and we have 26 SOL remediation employees. They may not all be working at this time, they're, they're just, you know, they, they work as needed for that remediation. And totaling, it's, it's about 323 employees if, if all of those additional employees were included.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bland.
We'll be glad to provide that.
Yeah, probably reading it, yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, if you could send it out, that'd be great.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yeah, thanks for the information. I agree with Ms. Parton's sentiments about having it be a retention bonus and putting it in September. The, yeah, other than that, that's, that's the only comments, thank you.
Ms. Rankin?
So for me, I still have some of the same concerns about who we exclude. So the union piece in me says just smooth the date out and then we don't have to worry about those people. Okay. But I still believe our homebound teachers and some of our other folks who work for us on a consistent basis need to be included in this. And again, shame on the administration for only saying SOQ positions are who we feel are valuable, because all of our employees are valuable and they deserve to be rewarded the same. So I'll have to see something really different before I can go along with what we have right now. Thank you.
I guess for me, the, yeah, I think because of the shift and stuff, I mean, I think, I think we probably need to see something a little more specific plan of what you're proposing for us to kind of react to it, because in the original one, you had conditions around when they were still here and when, and all the different stuff. Now, if we're pushing it, are we only talking about staff who were employed with us at the end of the year and who stayed with us until the beginning of the next year and not any new staff we had over the summer? I just, just to try to get kind of those, those specifics nailed down. And then, and then so we can more clearly identify maybe some of those other categories that you identified, so. I guess, I guess in terms of the guidance that we're talking about tonight, just to kind of give you guys something, right? It, it sounds like we're all in favor, well, it sounds like a majority of the board at least is in favor of waiting until the fall in order to give it, and then that gives us time to figure out exactly those conditions and who and how much and all that kind of stuff. Can I at least get a, a thumbs up on that part of the plan? In terms of waiting until the fall to, to give this?
Again, part of my concern is this would exclude people who have worked for us for a whole year and are retiring. That's just one of the groups who we just say, eh, we moved the deadline, so now you won't get it. I, I have big problems with that.
Okay, so it sounds like at least we have a, a majority at least comfortable with the timeline, but I still think we gotta figure out the specifics, so.
We'd be happy to bring it back to you after the start of the new fiscal year. The money would have to be appropriated anyway, it can't, it can't sit over there, so we can appropriate it and then it can, a determination can be made on what employees would receive that.
So when we're talking about funds that have been appropriated, we're basically talking about year-end funds. Is that what we're talking about?
These are unanticipated revenues. So typically, each year, we, we have an amount of funds that are, that are moved over. So each year, our, our operating budget expenses, the revenues match that number. And so our, our, our budget is based on what we, we believe will come in in revenues. The state provides us exact numbers on, on, on those, and the federal government provides us pretty good numbers with that as well. But then we have amendments just like this that come in throughout the year where additional revenues will, will come in. We also have our ADM numbers for students, and so our budget is based on that ADM. And if that is any higher on March 31st, when they look at those numbers, then additional funding is provided. So there's, there's many different reasons that, that those unanticipated revenues come in. But at the end of the day, we, we do have that to ask the county to reappropriate it back into the budget or into the healthcare reserve, which we've, we've done over the last couple of years as well, being self-funded.
Okay, so we may be just using different terminology for the same pot of money. Because our goal should be that we use every penny that our budget says that we need, and for whatever reasons, we end up with extra money. And typically, unless it's two different sets of money we're talking about, those funds are used for, let's say, non-renewable, one-time purchases, like buses and things like that, because they don't necessarily roll over into the next budget.
Correct.
Am I correct?
You, you are, so with our operating budget, we do spend down. We, we typically spend down to a very, very small amount of money. We, we use the, you know, 99 point, you know, percentage of, of our operating budget funds. So the unanticipated revenues are beyond that. Those are, those are funds that have come in that were not anticipated as part of our budget. And at the end of the year, that's what we look at. We definitely, we do those year-end purchases where things are needed, whether they would be school buses, Chromebooks, things, things like that. And, and then also money is put into the healthcare reserve to help continue to fund that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, great. Board, any other discussion on this topic? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Dr. Widener, our director of human resources, will present a proposal to adjust the pay scale for speech-language pathologists and school psychologist positions.
Chair Hudson, board members, Dr. Brigan, I'm here to present a proposal that we make an adjustment in our pay plan for the pay scales for the positions of our speech-language pathologists as well as our school psychologists. You've heard me speak many times this year when I've delivered staffing updates, talking about our shortages. You know, I've referenced that some of our, our biggest areas of need are in the area of special education. And our percentage of vacancies and spread have fluctuated between 8 to 15% of those positions vacant. But when we break it down and look at the specific positions of our speech-language pathologists as well as our school psychologists, those vacancies are even greater. So currently, we have eight speech-language pathologist positions in the school division. At the start of the year, four of those positions were vacant and remained vacant into the second semester. The second semester, we were able to fill one of those in January and then another one in March, and we still have two vacant positions. So just think about, you know, 50% of those positions were vacant. We were unable to fill them despite a lot of efforts, you know, to advertise, to recruit, to connect with universities. They've been very difficult to fill positions. Similarly, our school psychologist positions have also been not quite as difficult to fill, but challenging. We have five positions there, and two, two of them, or 40% of them, have remained vacant throughout the school year. We currently have one open for our next school year. So there's clearly a need here that we are finding very difficult to fill. These positions are important, they're critical, they have great value to the needs of our students. Our speech-language pathologists have very specialized skills and knowledge in being able to serve student communication needs. Many of the services they provide are mandated through the IEP process. So again, these are positions that if we can't fill them, we have to be able to fulfill those services through other means. And the same is true of our school psychologists. They play a critical role in the IEP evaluation process. We need them to help with the testing, the assessment, the evaluation, the determination of eligibility, and they, they are a critical role of those IEP teams. So the, these are positions that we need. We've, we have had a recruitment challenge, as have many of the school divisions across the state and across the country. There is a shortage for both of these positions. That's certainly true in Virginia, I've talked to, you know, directors in other school divisions, and certainly these have become hard-to-fill positions. There's a high demand, certainly since COVID, I think we've seen an increase in the need for speech and language disorders. But the other thing that makes these positions, I think, hard to address the shortage, unlike other teacher positions, is of the, the specialized nature and the requirements to obtain a license to become either a speech-language pathologist or a school psychologist. The state has developed a lot of programs that have provided kind of expedited pathways to become a special education teacher, a math teacher, an English teacher, but those expedited pathways really don't exist for these positions. These are positions that require specific undergraduate degrees and coursework, and then on top of that, a fairly intensive, extensive master's degree program. To get a master's degree in speech-language pathologist generally takes at least three years. There's a lot of intense coursework, there's clinical work that's required in it, there's exams that have to be taken. So again, that, that, there, there is, there is, no one has been able to come up with an expedited way. And we've even looked at trying to partner with some universities to grow your own program, and even in doing that, it's still, it's still a time-consuming process. So that, that's just kind of limited our ability to, to find additional candidates. So I just want to give you a look at our current salary scale. So we do have a separate salary scale for SLPs and school psychologists. You can see that at the top compared to our teachers with a master's degree. So years ago, this group had asked that they have a separate scale. And you can see the starting, the starting salary is slightly lower, but then the top is higher. And at the time, I think there were more experienced candidates out there, so our, our scale was attractive to people with experience because it was slightly higher than the teachers with the master's degree scale. This year, for our speech-language pathologists who signed a contract with us and were willing to stay on for two years, we did offer a $5,000 retention bonus. But that only allowed, only, only three people participated in that. More significant, I want you to look at these numbers, because I, I think this kind of illustrates why we're proposing this change. When we look at the salary scales of other surrounding school divisions, school divisions that are nearby that compete with us for positions, they've added money and they've increased their, their salaries. So you can see our pay range there at the top, if you compare it with Salem, they start higher than us by almost $4,000, but then on top of that, they're now offering $7,500 stipend. Pulaski starts around the same amount as we do, but they're offering an $8,000 stipend. And even Radford City, that starts a little bit more than us, also offer a $5,000 stipend. So our current scale is not competitive with our local, other local school divisions. And so that's, that's a big reason for the change. We have a diminishing pool out there, and then our current salary range is not the most competitive. And so I, I think we're, we are losing candidates, but we're also running the risk of not being able to retain our current SLPs. And so there's also an additional cost for you to be aware of, because these positions provide services that we are required to provide. When we can't hire our own people, we therefore have to contract those services out. And so our special education department has worked through the RFP process. We have actually contracted out with nine different companies to provide these services. And in mid-April, this number is probably higher right now. We spent $453,898 on contracted services just for speech-language pathologists. So we've actually ended up having to spend more money because of our inability to fill these positions with our own employees. And there's other challenges when we contract out services, because when we contract out services, they're not our employees. They're not part of our team, and even though they, they work with our employees, there, there's, it's just not the same integration as when we hire them as, as our employees and they're part of the MCPS team. So what we are proposing is that we make a change to our pay plan, and that we change the pay plan so that the starting salary for those two positions starts at $65,000 and goes to $90,250. We feel this would make us highly competitive. If we could advertise this now, I feel strongly that we would attract candidates and we would be, we would probably be able to fill all, if not, most if not all of our positions for next year. Currently, we have no school psychologist applicants, and I think we have one speech-language pathologist applicant. So, so there is a need, and we feel that if we would expand our salary scale for these positions, it would help us attract the candidates that we need to fill these critical positions. So that is our proposal.
Thank you for that detail. School board, who has questions or comments?
So.
Yep.
Okay, so two questions. So how did you come up with the figures?
These numbers of 65, we looked at, we compared to the other school divisions. And we thought, and I can go back and show you some of those numbers. And again, if you look at the pay range, I want you to also add the stipends that some of those school divisions are offering. But if we started at 65, that would put us above the other school divisions in the area that are attracting people.
And that would be without a stipend?
That, that would, that would not be a stipend, that, and which is another benefit to us, because we would just, instead of offering a stipend, we would roll it into their, their salary, which is better for the employee.
Okay, and the stipends are offered every year?
Well, currently, so this current school year, our, our current budget had stipends for special education positions. That's not in the current budget proposal right now. So, so those stipends are not currently in there for next year. Now, you know, we've, we've proposed an improved salary scale for everybody, you know, particularly the compressed salary scales. So, you know, we're hoping that if that is approved, that all, all employees will benefit from the compressed scale. But no, there's no stipend proposed in the current budget for next year.
But for the other school districts, is that a yearly?
That, that is a yearly thing, now they have not published their pay scales for next year. But, you know, just in talking to directors, my understanding is that they're intending to continue that. That's what they currently have on their websites.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Roundtree?
So, oh, we have other professional therapists in our district as well. Is there a reason that they're not being included in these pay scale adjustments, such as OTs?
Our OTs and PTs are occupational therapists and physical therapists, we have two of those positions. We didn't include them on here simply because we've had, not had vacancies in those, in those positions. Currently, they are on the pay, same pay scale. So if it's the will of the board, we, we, we could include them in this as well.
And we're also, we also have contract services for OTs and PTs.
I believe we do.
Thank you.
Ms. Russell?
I, to follow up on what Dr. Roundtree said, I would be interested in just seeing kind of where OTs and PTs kind of fall in the county comparison and what we're, what we're spending for contracted services as additional information. However, you made a very persuasive argument, and I appreciate all the work that you put into this, and I feel very comfortable to approve changing the salary scale to make sure that our students are getting the support that they need.
Ms. Bond?
If this is what we need to do, then I guess we'll just have to do it.
Ms. Parton?
So if the need is there and we're not getting them, we need to do something. So I definitely agree on trying to attract however we can. How many did you say that we actually need of both? Again, I'm sorry.
So currently, I think for next year, we're looking to fill, we have three speech-language pathologist positions that we still need to fill. We still have a remaining school psychologist position to fill.
Okay, because we have already filled?
Two, yeah.
So altogether, we're looking at, at six individuals at this pay scale, or somewhere along that pay scale?
So, so if we filled all the positions, we have eight speech-language pathologists plus five school psychologists, and then if we added the OTs and the PTs, those would be an additional two positions.
Do we use any type of measure to figure out where they're going to fall according to, I guess, experience or whatever is how we're going to land them somewhere in between that pay grade? Like, what are we looking at for the, for the upper end of the pay grade as compared to the lower end of the pay grade?
So, so someone coming in on step one or step zero, they, they're, they would see the, the biggest increase. I mean, that, that's a difference of about $13,000, where someone coming in at the top would see it's a significant increase, but not that large. Does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am, it does, thank you.
Dr. Gutrie?
Yeah, just to follow up on the OT and PT, are they also serving special ed students? Are they serving similar population?
Yes, they're considered part of the special education department.
Okay, now in terms of their qualifications, when you just went through on that slide and said, you know, they need the master's degree, three years, are OTs and PTs, do OTs and PTs go through similar training and licensure? As, is it comparable?
I can't speak to the specificity of their training, I mean, they, they are required to have specialized degrees and training. The master's piece, I, I, I want to say, and Dr. Brigan, you maybe you'll answer this better than I can.
I, I believe the PT now is a doctoral level program. OT, I don't think is doctoral level yet, but it could be depending on where you enroll. You know, one of the differences between the SLP and those positions is? You know, one of the differences between the SLP and those positions is we have a greater need for SLP, and that's why there's more of a shortage. We don't have as many students with those significant needs that require OT and PT as you do with speech.
Right, okay. I appreciate that. I mean, I would, I'm also interested, because if you have people serving the same population also have extra requirements in terms of their experience, education, licensure, then I could see how they would take issue with having a different pay scale, simply because we're having trouble filling those positions. So I could see why they would see that as an equity issue, but I think that we need to do something. So I'm happy to see this plan before us.
Great. So it sounds like there's general support from the board on this, I guess. My only question is, how does this impact the budget that we're approving at our next meeting?
We anticipated with the salary adjustments, if they went through, and obviously, we had to vote on the budget with the salary compression guides, there would be an increase for SLP. So we anticipated funding more monies to this. Not exactly this amount, but it's within what we thought about.
Okay.
And it's a small number of people, you know, it's not 900 teachers.
Right, 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 okay. So I guess, just for completeness, can I get a thumbs up for everybody in support of the plan that's presented here?
Well, are we asking for more information on the, at least on the OTs?
I was going to ask about that separately.
Okay, I wasn't sure if you were just, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So just what was presented for the SLPs and, I'm forgetting my acronyms here, 1105?
SLPs and school psychologists.
Yeah, yeah. And so just a thumbs up on that for now, first. Well, the second part is, do we also want to consider tonight also including the OTs and PTs, or do we want to get additional information on that? Okay, that's fine. So are we in favor of the SLPs and the?
Yeah, because I think some of the urgency is that we have these open positions and we need to get the approval to advertise at the higher rate.
That's correct.
So there's more of an urgency to getting this through, whereas we don't have those open positions, right, for OT and PT, correct?
Currently, we do not. That's correct. We have what's called a COTA, Certified Occupational Therapist Assistant, and that is different. That's a different pay scale.
Okay, so it sounds like support for this, and more information about the others would be great.
Okay, I'll bring that information to the next meeting.
Awesome. Yep.
Chair Hudson, I would consider, if someone would be interested in making a motion, that we tabled the staffing update with the lateness of the hour?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitchry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
No.
Dr. Roundtree?
No.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Five in favor, two opposed.
Motion carries. The plan had been based on our feedback from the school board retreat, that we were going to review that anyway and just ask questions, as opposed to having you do a full presentation.
Okay.
So bring that back to the next meeting, and we'll be ready for that.
All right, thank you.
Are there any items of unfinished business?
At our retreats last week, was it only last week? Seems like it's been a long time, week and a half ago. Something that was on our agenda that I'd asked the division to provide is what I'm referring to as a monitoring calendar, and what we got, what you can see on the agenda from that meeting is just the months and some regular reports that we typically get when we get financial information, when we get gifted update, that kind of thing. I had done a training and connected to model policy from a division in Arizona that delineated a little more specifically, like which months, different presentations are held, and some data points. It's just, just an example, and I shared that, or I shared that with Dr. Briggin and Ms. Osborne, and it was distributed to the rest of the board. I would like to, I guess, I have kind of two questions. If my fellow board members had particular items that they would want to see on a monitoring calendar with particular data points, and/or if the division wanted to put something together that was a little more, with some more specificity, I think even just from public comment today, things that we discussed at the retreat, and just, I think, I think a need to really communicate very well to our stakeholders, our taxpayers, in the community, how the division is focused on student achievement throughout all the things that we tried to do, I think that's really important, and I feel like that kind of tool might help smooth things out a little bit, so that information is regular, there are very, very clear things that we're sharing, so there isn't so much confusion about how resources are allocated and that kind of thing. So would my board members be interested in contributing to something like that, and/or would the division feel comfortable revising their calendar to include some of that specificity?
I guess I'll chime in. You know, I think it was the last, if not one of the last agenda topics at our retreat, and I think I noted that we had a majority of the board interested in more information on that, but it wasn't clear to me who had the action item coming out of that. So if that was on the administration to propose an idea, or if the board's going to work on that. So I do think there's value in getting some clarity.
Yeah, we could definitely work on that, and put some more specificity to that, and bring it back for, hey, here's a sample we want to look for as we move forward. Good timing, too, as we end this school year, beginning of another one, as we have the, you know, the school year sequence coming up. So we'll work on that with the team, if that's what the school board wants. Bring back, hey, here's an idea. We added some of the things that Ms. Purcell put in. What do y'all think for discussion at a future board meeting? Maybe not the 20th, maybe the next meeting, if that works at all.
Any questions or comments on that? Am I misremembering the will of the board?
Yeah, it was just that we would merge those two calendars and then add stuff, specificity to it.
Okay. Yeah, great. Yeah, it wasn't, in fairness to everybody, it wasn't very well presented, because it was put together kind of last minute at the board, so apologies for that, but I still think there's value in doing it. It just needs to have some more work, some more work put behind it. Okay?
I still appreciate the work to get it started, because it's one of the things I've been talking about for years, need to get back to.
There you go. Any other items of unfinished business?
Just one question that came to mind during the meeting was, one of the things, when Sodexo was here, asked about that student survey, and they said that they would do one before the end of the year. It just occurred, we were doing the food program earlier, it was like, they agreed to do it, but we haven't heard anything. We're getting close. I mean, we're almost at the end of school. I don't know if that has happened, but I think, you know, we've just finished a whole year with them, and I'd love, I think it's important to find out how effective they've been in the division with providing food services.
I'll find out. I don't know if they did it or not.
Okay, thank you.
I agree. Anything else? Okay. Any items of new business?
Yeah, I've been contemplating, actually, one of our comments at public address was talking about our opening meetings and how we go into closed session, and I actually did some research, and they were correct. So one of my concerns is, I've actually had people say, well, you guys don't even open with the pledge allegiance, and so by doing it, how we do it, people don't see that as well, that we do do those things, and even though I don't think we're trying to hide behind closed doors or anything like that, I do remember we used to meet and, you know, or different places. And Penny, if you can help me, we did come out here and then, and opened and did the pledge, and then we, you know, dismissed too. So for the sake of our community, if they feel more comfortable with that, what does the board feel like if that's something that I think we might should do? I don't know how we kind of got out of that habit, but if...
Okay, so I have a question about that. So it says we're supposed to open in a public setting, so we don't close the doors, it's announced. The only thing I think that we might need to clarify is where that is going to take place, because it has been changed, because the technology that we need and the space that we need for student matters and meeting with, for legal advice and other things that we do via Zoom or through technology is not set up on this side of the building. I want us to be transparent, and just for the record, and make sure when you splice this out to make it sound like something that I'm not saying, I do believe I am special. I believe my God made me special, just like he made everybody else special, but that doesn't mean I'm above doing anything the way it's supposed to be. So make sure you get that right, as your God would will you to do. So I think maybe if it would satisfy it, if we announced where we'll be opening and anybody who wanted to be there, because I'm not in favor of having to run back and forth between the two sides of the buildings to be able to conduct business.
And I'm perfectly fine with that. I just think if that's what we need to follow, then...
I agree.
Then we should.
Yep, I agree.
Because we talk a lot about procedures and policies, and so this is one of them.
This is, in question, as, you know, public body must convene an open session and take a recorded vote before going into closed session. This ensures the public is aware of the discussion and the decision to go into closed session. So if this is a, then that's what we need to be doing then.
And that's what we do do.
No, but there's a difference, because, sorry to interrupt, is that on board docs, we list this room as the meeting place. So what we should do is that we need to list where we are...
That's just what I said, yeah.
Well, right, I'm just affirming, it doesn't need to be in this room, but we need to make the public aware where it is.
That's just what I said.
I'm not arguing with you. I'm just...
Yeah, I had taken a note, you know, based on the feedback. Actually, you know, I think Ms. Purcell and I were actually discussing that earlier today, just randomly anyway, so I do think that we need to make a change there. I think, yeah, we can decide what change makes the most sense, because I was curious how the board supervisors did it as well, and if we, like, would the live stream start with the initial, you know, opening, but then kind of wait while we go into closed session and stuff? Yeah, like, there's some questions we have to figure out, but I think the simplest solution is what you, is what Ms. Franklin proposed and you agreed with, which is just clarifying where the opening is, because I do agree, you know, if we're calling the lawyer on the telecom and stuff like that, you know, we need to be in a place where we can be productive, so. Yeah, I appreciate that. I had noted that already. We'll definitely follow up on that. Any other items of new business? Okay. Are there any announcements?
Yeah, so this past week, I got to attend the Blacksburg High School Matilda performance. Great job to all the students that were performing there. My children loved it. I loved it. And also, thanks to all of our teachers for all the work that they do for our students on Teacher Appreciation Day today and every day of the year. Thanks.
Great. Anyone else?
And many thanks to the teachers and cast of the Blacksburg Middle School performance of Legally Blonde. That was also this weekend. It's just, it's a busy month that's just going to get busier, so that was really wonderful performance as well. I'd also just like to say happy birthday to Dr. Roundtree, and thank you so much for spending your birthday here with us on the dais.
Uh, no, I'm sorry. I can do that. All right. Any other announcements? Yes?
So our communications director, Andrew Webb, was nice enough to send out an email wanting some feedback from the board, which I am guilty that I emailed him this morning and told him I was late, asking for like a quote from the board for, to show teachers' appreciation, and since it may not happen, I'm going to read what I sent him. I don't really think it's a quote, but it's heartfelt, and so I just want to let the teachers know that teachers are not merely educators, they start passions that ignite a fire. Thank you for not only starting the fire for the light that will lead the way, but for planting the seed for our students to continually grow with love and compassion. We appreciate you. So thank you guys so much.
Great. Anyone else? All right, great. Next up are upcoming school board meetings. Our next meeting is back here on May 20th, and the other dates are in board docs. And since we did our closed session beforehand, and we don't have to go into a closed session now, so I adjourn this meeting at 11:21 PM.